Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance invocation? I don't know if we have a flag this morning, but it should be one that come on the screen. If not, we'll just do the Pledge of Allegiance anyway. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our gracious and heavenly Father, we are so thankful that you touched us with your loving hands to wake us this morning to see another one of your beautiful days. Father, we are so thankful for that. Father, we ask that you be with us today as we make decisions for this great county. We ask that you regular our minds and humble our hearts as we make these decisions. Father, as always, we ask that you put your loving arms of protection around those first responders, whether they be police officers, whether they be military, whether they be doctors and nurses that are fighting this dreadful disease that we are so in out of place these days, but hoping that one day we all can come back together as brothers and sisters in unity. Father, we ask that you please, please protect those people. And when our work is done here today, Father, we ask you to take us back to our homes or back to our families, or if we're at home, to be at our homes, safe and sound. These are all blessed. We ask you in your righteous and holy name, amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
I will read, White is absent, and I will read his absent memo. But do we have a quorum?
Yes, there you have a quorum.
Okay. This memo comes from Commissioner Stacy White. It says, "Mr. Chairman, I've been unable to attend tomorrow's Board of County Commissioners meeting due to an unforeseen family circumstance. Please be the reason for my absence into the record. So please record that as Commissioner White being excused from the meeting today." This morning, we're going to have the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. This is a special day that the Board of County Commissioners, the people of Hillsborough County, is a pleasure to present the fourth annual Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. Commissioner White would have done this, but he's not with us this morning. So I think he's turned it over to Commissioner Merman, who will be presenting the award. Commissioner Merman?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everybody. And I see Governor Martinez is often on the screen, correct?
Correct. Yes, yes.
Good, good. Just want to make sure you're here. And I'm going to give you a little bit of a history. In January 2017, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved the creation of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award to honor an individual or group dedicated to preserving the county's natural resources. The award is named in honor of the 26th President of the United States. Known as the nation's first conservationist president, Theodore Roosevelt placed more than 200 million acres under public protection and doubled the number of sites in the national park system. In 1906, President Roosevelt signed the National Monuments Act, protecting the Grand Canyon and preserving numerous wildlife sanctuaries, federal game reserves, and national forests. It was through his efforts that Congress enacted the first laws to protect wildlife against poaching in Yellowstone National Park. It is in this spirit of conservation of our most precious environmental resources that we present this award today. First, I want to thank members of the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program Committee, formerly known as ELAP, who made the nominations and recommended the recipient. I believe we have some members on the call today, and I'd like to recognize them. They are Jan Smith, Jan Smith, who is Chair of the General Committee, Joe Guidry, who's a voting member, and Jack Berlin, who's a voting member. Thank you all for your service on this important committee. Thank you to those committee members who are not able to join us today. The work you do to protect the pristine areas of our county is helping us to secure environmental gems that will endure for generations. Now, I'd like to say something about Gus Munch. Mr. Munch, a commercial crabber and environmental activist, passed away on August 14, 2019, at age 83. His death was, is, and was a huge loss to Hillsborough County. A few years ago, Mr. Munch graciously gave ELAP $20,000. His generous donation enables the recipients of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award to choose $2,000 worth of improvement projects at a Hillsborough County nature area of their choice. I knew Mr. Munch a long time, Commissioner White did, as well as I did. He has greatly missed. His spirit will also live on through the ELAP program and these special projects. So today, I have the great honor to announce the recipient of the 2020 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award, Governor Bob Martinez. And Governor, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
Great. Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners. I'm sorry we cannot be together in person to celebrate with you today, but we're still going to make this day memorable for you. And is the wonderful First Lady, Mrs. Martinez, on the call with you?
Yes, I am.
Awesome. Good morning, Mrs. Martinez. We'd also like to recognize you and thank you for all that you have done for our community and our state. It's very nice to see both of you. Governor Martinez needs no introduction, but I'm going to try. Kind, gracious, humble, Bob Martinez is an icon and one of Hillsborough County's favorite sons. Born in Tampa, he graduated from Jefferson High School. He earned a Bachelor of Science in Social Science from the University of Tampa and a Master's Degree in Labor and Industrial Relations from the University of Illinois. An expert in labor relations, Mr. Martinez served as Executive Director of the Hillsborough County Classroom Teachers Association from 1966 to 1975. He also owned and operated the Cafe Sevilla, Spanish restaurant, and was Vice Chair of the Southwest Florida Water Management District from 1975 to 1979. In 1979, Mr. Martinez was elected Mayor of Tampa, serving until 1986. And on January 6, 1987, he took office as the 40th Governor of the State of Florida, the first of Spanish descent and the second Republican since Reconstruction. Governor Martinez's multitude of accomplishments can be seen throughout Hillsborough County, from the swamps of the upper Hillsborough River to the banks of Cockroach Bay and across Florida. His policies continue to benefit residents today. As both mayor and governor, he fought to protect the environment and promote conservation, recognizing that saving irreplaceable resources and preventing costly pollution were good for taxpayers as well as our natural treasures. Mayor Martinez oversaw the development of a Tampa facility to burn refuse to reduce energy, and he directed that the methane produced at the city's wastewater plant be recycled into energy. He oversaw completion of a plant that produced the most advanced wastewater treatment possible, and he preserved waterfront land, establishing Picnic Island Park. He took decisive actions to stop pollution at waterfront parks. He oversaw the remarkable transformation of what then was known as Lowry Park Zoo into a destination for residents and visitors. As Florida's chief executive, Governor Martinez gave conservation unprecedented attention. He implemented Preservation 2000, the Environmental Lands Protection Program that eventually became Florida Forever. Significantly, this program greatly benefited Hillsborough County by providing matching funds for our own ELAP program. This enabled us to preserve land we might not have otherwise been able to protect. Further, Governor Martinez oversaw the adoption of the Surface Water Improvement Management Act, or SWIM, which directed the state's water management districts to clean up Florida's rivers, lakes, and estuaries. This initiative brought sharp focus to Tampa Bay and Hillsborough River, funding the restoration of damaged lands to their natural state, filtering runoff, and preventing erosion. Governor Martinez promoted growth policies, prevent new development from harming resources, and overwhelming public services. And he expanded manatee protection zones, adopted prohibitions against taking dolphins from state waters. In 1991, 1992, Governor Martinez served this country as Director of the Office of National Drug Control Policy. After leaving public office, he continued supporting environmental stewardship, helping to convince Hillsborough voters to reauthorize ELAP in 2008. Governor Martinez, your service, your dedication, persistence embodies the spirit of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award, and we are immensely grateful for all that you have done for Hillsborough County and the state of Florida. I see that you are in receipt of that handsome plaque. I'll hold it up and show everybody.
Why don't you get the terrific photo of the Cockroach Bay?
Okay. This is gorgeous. And the beautiful picture of Cockroach Bay Islands. Oh, that's awesome. Thank you. Cockroach Bay Islands, the first ELAP purchase to be approved by the state for joint funding through the Preservation 2000 program. And that was back in February 1991. The purchase covered 103 acres and was approved by the state for 50% reimbursement, or $602,300 of the county's total acquisition cost Thank you for this jewel, Governor. In addition, your name will be just the fourth added to this perpetual plaque that hangs in the county center. And I want to give you a very heartfelt congratulations, knowing you for so long. And you're not just an icon, you're a legacy that, especially on environmental issues throughout our community, but also the state. And just want to give you a nice applause. And would you like to say a few words?
Commissioner Merman, thank you very much for those very kind words. Commissioner and Chair, Mr. Miller, all members of the board, the selection committee that recommended to the Hillsborough County Commission. I want to thank all of you for bringing my name up for consideration and voting to award this great award that is named for Theodore Roosevelt. It's always great to receive an award. You and all members of the County Commission probably have received numerous awards. In my nearly 20 years of public life of one kind or another, I have received many different kinds of awards. But I'll have to say this, the awards that I have received related to environment or education are even more special. These are things that I did as a career, things that I grew up here in Tampa doing. And I guess I get asked from time to time, why did you get involved with environment? I grew up in the northwest corner of West Tampa, when the city limits was Lincoln Avenue and Tampa Bay Boulevard, in a very rural kind of environment where fishing and hunting was encouraged and members of my family had dairies. So my life was outdoors. And I think I learned to appreciate early in life what the environment can do and why it's so important for people to enjoy it. And my wife, Mary Jane, and I, as we met in high school, we went fishing together and still do from time to time. So I think that led me, as mayor and as governor, to engage in environmental issues. And I think that at the state level, you know, there was seven big ones that I engaged in. Preservation 2000 clearly was the one that was most noted. SWIM, solid waste legislation, stormwater legislation, Dolphin and Manatee Protection Acts. All of these, I think, contributed to the state of Florida's environmental heritage that we've had throughout its many centuries of existence. So I'm delighted that I've had an opportunity to serve in public life, that the public gave me an opportunity to do so. I'm glad that I was able to use my time in public life addressing a lot of environmental issues. And I can tell you that this photograph of Cockroach Bay, by the way, I also fish with Mr. Munch there on Cockroach Bay and got some stone crabs, some blue crabs, and I had a great time with him. He did a great job in preparing the meal for lunchtime, so we had a great time. Wonderful man. So again, I want to thank you for this award. It's one that I certainly will hang and look at from time to time. And I hope that you, Commissioner Merman, Chair Miller, and all members of the County Commission have a successful tenure in office. And again, we thank you for the attention you've given to the award, and it's one I will honor and I will hold with great esteem. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you again, and we are so proud to honor you today. And your contributions definitely have a lasting impact, not just on our county, but throughout the state of Florida. We do have some distinguished guests on the call today, so we're not totally done. And I just wanted to see, is Joe Guidry on the line?
Yes.
Joe, of course, as we know, he's the former opinion editor of the Tampa Tribune and who was also the first recipient of this award. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Merman and all the commissioners. It is a great honor to be here today to say a few words about the individual I consider one of Florida's true environmental heroes. As mayor and particularly as governor, he set a remarkable standard for stewardship by advancing programs and policies that prevented pollution, discouraged irresponsible development, and protected our natural resources, particularly threatened waterways such as the Hillsborough River in Tampa Bay. Time and time again, he demonstrated that a truly frugal government conserves resources and prevents pollution. Foremost among his many environmental accomplishments was the adoption of Preservation 2000, later renamed Florida Forever. This program enabled the state to buy and preserve critically important wilderness. It has helped save more than 2.5 million acres. The land buying program has played a critical role in the extraordinary success of Hillsborough's Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program. Forrest Tuberville, the county's Director of Conservation Environmental Lands, tells me that Hillsborough has received $82.3 million from the state conservation effort originated by Governor Martinez. Preservation 2000 and Florida Forever have assisted in the acquisition of approximately 53% of ELAP's 62,000 acres. So thanks to Governor Martinez's foresight and determination, pristine land throughout Hillsborough that likely would have been paved over has been saved. Beyond that, in 2008, Governor Martinez joined with the late Commissioner Platt to head the campaign for a voter referendum to continue ELAP, which passed overwhelmingly. So I want to thank Governor Martinez for everything he's done to defend our natural heritage and congratulate him for being selected for this honor. I cannot think of a more deserving recipient for the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Is Dr. Allison DeFor on the line?
Yes, ma'am. Good to see you again.
And Dr. DeFor, of course, I've known you a long time. You are a noted environmentalist, a former sheriff and judge, and now an Episcopalian priest.
There's salvation for us all, isn't there?
I know you know Commissioner Miller, too.
I do, Senator. Good to see you.
Good to see you also.
It's a pleasure and an honor to be here to help us honor our old friend. The, we knew each other in Tampa. I remember in 1974, crossing one side of the street, trying to get my former classmate, Ed Root Jr., elected to the legislature against somebody nobody ever heard of named Lee Moffett. And Governor Martinez was running on the other side of the street, working his way down, trying to get elected mayor, which didn't work out that year, but it worked out later. We renewed when I was sheriff in Key West, and he came down. We had a boat grounding case, and we went swimming around it. And I remember seeing a lobster and trying to have to decide between protecting the governor or getting that lobster, but I did decide to protect the governor. We renewed when I joined his ticket as his running mate in 1990 and later with the Teddy Roosevelt Society. And I was thinking, how different Florida would be if it hadn't been for Governor Martinez and Mary Jane and the work that they've done. The stuff that he did at the Water Management District and as mayor was significant. All of us who grew up in Tampa remember what the bay smelled like once upon a time. But it all kind of culminated with P2000, Preservation 2000, which we, looking backwards, it's easy to forget that that was the largest land acquisition effort ever anywhere. I mean, nations didn't do $2 billion worth of land acquisition. And it became, there'd always been a sort of a latent gene in the Republican Party in Florida, at least going back to Teddy Roosevelt being one of the three vice presidents of the Florida Audubon when it was formed before the national Audubon, Governor Bloxham being one of the other vice presidents. But we created a situation in Florida where there are two green parties. And there may have a difference in emphasis. One may be more regulatory, one may be more conservation easements, but it's almost a bidding war, and that's not true in most states. And that became really pivotal when Jeb ran the second time. The first time he ran, he didn't have a lot to say about the environment. He didn't win. The second time, he had a lot to say about the environment in the Teddy Roosevelt Society that we started in the party and that Governor Martinez chaired, and that helped create Florida Forever as one of Jeb's major initiatives. And another $2 billion, and the Waydell's monies echoed down through the counties and the water management districts have protected huge amounts of property. Our grandchildren, children of our grandchildren, will know what we did in this generation to protect the environment in Florida. And an awful lot of that was at the lead of Governor Martinez and Mary Jane, and we are grateful to you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. DeFor. Is Eric Eichenberg? He is President and CEO of the Everglades Foundation. Is he on the line?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to be with you all this morning. First, I want to say how much affection and respect that I have for Bob and Mary Jane Martinez. They are a wonderful couple for this state, great ambassadors for Florida. It's been a true privilege and joy to get to know them over the years, spend time with them, see them with their family, and the impact that they have on so many people across our state. Joe and Allison covered a number of the environmental success stories of the Martinez administration under the leadership and vision of Bob Martinez. But let me just also remind you all of his steps to preserve and protect the Kissimmee River. And at the Everglades Foundation, as we continue to pursue the restoration of America's Everglades, something that Teddy Roosevelt very much was committed to as far as our national parks and our national treasures, it was Bob Martinez that started the process to restore the Kissimmee. And based on his vision and his leadership, the Kissimmee River is restored. The wading bird population has returned in tremendous fold. The wetlands, the wildlife, the benefits that we see each and every day in this ecosystem is the legacy of Bob Martinez. The governor is someone who demonstrates each and every day what it means to be a conservationist, what it means to protect our natural resources here, and not only in our country, but here in our state. And it was his leadership throughout his administration and even after his time in public service that has been a role model for all of us. And it has been a pure joy and privilege to see the governor, to see him in action, but also to understand the history and the importance of what he's meant to the state of Florida, and what an honor to receive the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. Governor, congratulations. It's great to see you and Mary Jane this morning, and thank you for all you've done for the great state of Florida.
Thank you, Eric.
And I want to thank all the speakers for their very gracious words. And again, Governor, we love you very much. You're just outstanding member of our community, and thank you again for your contributions. And I'll just ask if any of our fellow commissioners would like to say a few words?
Yes, ma'am. I have them lined up, Commissioner. We'll start off with Commissioner Overman. You recognize?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Merman, for making this award to Governor Martinez. When I moved to the Tampa Bay area in '84 from the DC area, watching the Washington DC area focus on restoring the Chesapeake Bay, I had a keen eye to those that had a passion for protecting our environment, as wonderful and as important as it is in the state of Florida. And you were mayor at the time and one of the first elected leaders that I had met when I moved to the Tampa area. And one of the things I've noticed about your leadership over the years is that you have always been very clear about the future you were committed to. And that is a sure sign of leadership. And you not only understood what you were looking to see and create, but you always worked at making it happen and finding partnerships and finding allies and colleagues that could see that future and bring it forward. And asked us all, what can we do to make that happen now? That leadership had not only shown itself in your mayorship, but also in your governorship and for the many things that I've seen you do over the years. And I just want to say, thank you for setting that legacy and setting that tone of leadership that this state can truly, for a long, long time, benefit from the great work that you've done for the state of Florida. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And what a great award this is for us today. As a long-term member of the ELAP Committee myself, you know, I want to say hello to my good friends and fellow long-term ELAP Committee members who are here with us today. And with the award memorializing Cockroach Bay Preserve, I'm glad, very glad, to hear my dear friend, the late, great Gus Munich, remembered so soon after his passing for his contributions, particularly around Cockroach Bay, by so many on this call today. And it is perfectly appropriate that ELAP chose former Governor Bob Martinez for this conservation award named for Theodore Roosevelt, the co-founder of the Sierra Club. With all the partisan politics in our country today, it's really wonderful to note that we have a long history in our country, our state, and our county of cross-party partnerships, working together to protect our environment and conserve our precious natural areas. I worked with both Bob Martinez and Jan Platt, two great leaders from different sides of the aisle when they together led the effort to pass the last extension of our ELAP program and get that on the ballot. And with that bipartisan leadership, the referendum passed on the ballot with nearly 80% of the vote in this county. I mean, that is cross-party partnerships working for the good of our county in its best form. And I thank Governor Martinez, and I'm very happy to be a part of this ceremony today as we recognize all his contributions to our county's ELAP program and our state's environment today. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. And I just want to thank Governor Martinez for his fine work. And I was so appreciative to have the opportunity this morning to learn so much more of his legacy. Your hands and work have touched such a great part of our environment. So thank you for that legacy and example. And we now will stand on your example as we move forward. So thank you.
Governor Martinez, congratulations on receiving this award. I have known you for a very, very, very long time. I don't even know how long it has been, but you and I have crossed paths, whether it's politically or friendship-wise. And it's very meaningful to what you've done to protect the environment and clean up this county and this state and even this country for our future generations to come. That's the important part of what you do as a future of the people that are living in this county. So I want to just personally say thank you so very much for all that you've done. Mrs. Martinez, thank you for being there with him. They always say, behind a great man is a great woman. Nah, 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 nah. It's beside and up front that carries us. Let's just face the fact, that's the way it goes. And I'm not ashamed to say that. So thank you for all you've done with your for all you've done with your husband. We appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Merman and all members of the board. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. This concludes the 2020 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough County Forever Conservation Award presentation. We'll now move into special recognitions. We have three recognitions a day. The recipients are all virtual. The first two presentations will be by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
Thank you very much again, Mr. Chair. Today, I'm going to be presenting a proclamation declaring October 2nd as Florida Manufacturing Day. Our next board meeting is after October 2nd, so that's why we're doing it in September. But I would like to ask if Roy Swetman, he is the president of Southern Manufacturing Technologies, is he on the line today? Is he with us?
Yes, I am, Commissioner.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Every year, the Board of County Commissioners recognizes October as Manufacturing Month. It's an annual event that's celebrated across the nation. Thousands of manufacturers across the country host open houses and presentations that feature cutting-edge manufacturing technology and career opportunities for job seekers. Through this proclamation, Hillsborough County celebrates Manufacturing Month, Florida Manufacturing Day, to recognize our state's incredible manufacturing industry. And it is growing very fast in Hillsborough County, and it is producing many, many jobs for our citizens. So I'd like to read the proclamation into the record, and then I'd like to ask Mr. Swetman to make a few remarks. It reads, "Whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of the economy in the United States and Florida, whereas recognizing October as Florida Manufacturing Month and October 2nd, 2020, as Florida Manufacturing Day highlights the importance of manufacturing and draws attention to the many rewarding, high-skill manufacturing jobs. Whereas these occasions show support for and celebrate Florida's manufacturers and school programs that prepare the future workforce. Whereas the following organizations strongly support manufacturing and manufacturing careers: the Association for Operations Management, Bay Area Manufacturers Association, Florida Suncoast Manufacturers Association, Florida Advanced Technological Education Center of Excellence, excellence known as FLATE, Florida Defense Contractors Association, Hillsborough Community College, Hillsborough County Public Schools Career and Technical Education, National Tooling and Machining Association, the Society of Manufacturing Engineers, the University of South Florida College of Engineering, and the Manufacturing Alliance of Hillsborough County, which we have played, this county has played a major part of. Whereas Manufacturing Day virtual student tours are conducted to strengthen the technical and academic skills of young adults enrolled in manufacturing, engineering, and design courses of study. Whereas manufacturing provides jobs for approximately 50,000 Hillsborough County residents, and manufacturing facilities in the county make products as diverse as components used in the home building, aircraft, aerospace, defense, and medical industries. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 2nd, 2020, as Florida Manufacturing Day in Hillsborough County and October 2020 as Florida Manufacturing Month. We urge all residents to recognize the value of manufacturers, their important role in the county, the state, and national economy. And this is executed the 16th day of September 2020, and of course, it's signed by all seven county commissioners. And I'm always very excited to present this commendation because it's an area of our, a segment of our business sector that really needs to increase and to help our students that really want to go more into some kind of a technological field or career tech without going on to post-secondary education. It does offer a lot of opportunity. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Swetman, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner.
Pleased to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you. As a representative of the local manufacturing community, I want to thank you, Commissioner Merman, for this proclamation and for your ongoing strong support for the Tampa Bay manufacturing sector. And thank you to all the Hillsborough County Commissioners for your support. While too many people still believe all manufacturing is done in China, I'm here to let everyone know that manufacturing is alive and well in Hillsborough County and the Tampa Bay region, contributing significantly to the local economy. One of the reasons Manufacturing Day and subsequently Manufacturing Month was started nationally was for manufacturers to open their doors and show young people the exciting, high-tech careers available in manufacturing that they weren't aware of. Last year, 1,300 middle and high school students toured manufacturing facilities in Hillsborough and Penellas Counties to see firsthand what kinds of products are manufactured locally, what kinds of careers are available. We at SMT did 12 tours ourselves. This year, surprise, surprise, we are doing virtual tours. So it'll be interesting to see how that works out. As Commissioner Merman read from the proclamation, there are many manufacturing organizations locally working together to help manufacturing grow and thrive in Tampa Bay. I serve on many of those boards and advisory councils, including BAMA, NTMA, Florida Makes, Career Source Tampa Bay, M Skills, the Advanced Manufacturing Workforce Leadership Council, FLATE, Tampa Bay Machining Apprenticeship, Industrial Manufacturing Technician Apprenticeship, Tampa Bay Works Manufacturing Collaborative, and several high school programs. So we work closely with our education partners in Hillsborough and Penellas School Systems, HCC, USF, SBC, ETC, and others to develop the advanced manufacturing workforce of the future. So as you can see, with all these organizations focused on manufacturing, as I said earlier, manufacturing is alive and well in Tampa Bay. So once again, thank you, Commissioner Merman and the entire board for this proclamation and for recognizing the importance of manufacturing.
Thank you, Roy, and thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it.
You want me to go on to the next one? Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, we're unable to hear you.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Your microphone arm is up on your headset?
That makes all the difference in the world, doesn't it?
It does. It does. I've done it a few times myself. That's why I noticed.
I was trying to, I was drinking water. I didn't want to bring it. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you, sir. Trust me, I've done it about 12 times this week. Mr. Swetman, I am so glad that you're here, and I'm so honored to have an opportunity to celebrate manufacturing in Hillsborough County. When I worked as a consultant with various different companies, I had the pleasure of touring various different manufacturing facilities to see what they did. So the work that you're doing with students to help them envision what they could possibly do in their lives is critically important because I learned so much about what people do, what opportunities there, and, and helped create that vision about, for me, what opportunities I might do if I didn't find myself here. That experience is so important to the young people of Hillsborough County so that they actually can see that there is an opportunity for them to do something great as part of a team, as part of an industry. And the diversity of manufacturing is critically important to our economy as we're learning in, especially in these times. So thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for the vision that you create for our young people and the partnership that you create with our school system and our various different apprenticeship programs. They're vital to the success of Hillsborough County. And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the work that you do, as well as all the industries that, that work with the, with the associations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate it. And you're welcome to tour us anytime.
Okay, I'll take you up on that as soon as we are able to get out and be around people. So, thank you.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize the next commendation.
Okay, thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Swetman, for being with us today. This is Backstage Pass Leader Stephanie Agliano of the Office of Neighborhood Relations. Is she on the line? Is she present today?
Yes, Commissioner Merman, I am.
Great. I'm glad to have you here. This next recognition goes to a group of passionate, knowledge-seeking people. They took the initiative to learn about their government, and they graduated from one of the most comprehensive, informative programs in Tampa Bay region. Twenty-three talented Hillsborough County neighborhood and business leaders were so committed to learning how our government serves people, they took the time to go behind the scenes. And that's why you call it Backstage Pass. Backstage Pass is a leadership program conducted by Neighborhood Relations, involves dozens of county employees. These graduates are true leaders who dove straight in and they worked very hard. I want to recognize the, all these individuals, all of whom have joined us this morning. Amanda Milligan, Ashley Moore, fired steel, Benjamin Rivas, Brenda Streeter, Bridget Wilson, Dan Hazy, Darren Fudge, Debony Montgomery, Emma Trapp, Evelyn Ocampo, Giovanni Cardenas, Irene Miranda, Janet Noah, Jennifer McDonald, Jennifer Wilhelm, Lorianne De Paz, Matthew Mitchum, Richard McKenzie, Russell Khan, Shauna Reenie, Tanya Duran, and Wendy Heath. And each graduate's going to receive their copy of the commendation that will recognize their graduation from Backstage Pass. And I'll read what it, the text that it says on the copy of their commendation. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize the 23 graduates of Backstage Pass, a Hillsborough County leadership program, and applauds them for taking the time to learn about the inner workings of county government. The Backstage Pass class of 2020 attended 12 half-day sessions from late August until late February, made possible by more than 50 county employees. The sessions gave these 23 Hillsborough County business and community leaders an insightful, behind-the-scenes look at county departments, operations, and facilities. Backstage Pass fosters an understanding of the services and programs provided by county departments, forms productive relationships between participants and county staff, and in addition, Backstage Pass provides firsthand experiences that inform, educate, and engage business and community leaders in understanding how their government works. Well-informed, civically engaged leaders become more effective leaders, which we know benefits everyone." So the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend the 23 graduates of Backstage Pass, a Hillsborough County leadership program, for their initiative and dedication, encourages them to use that knowledge they gained as they work to enhance their communities. And this is executed the 16th day of September 2020. Of course, it's signed by all seven county commissioners. And I just want to say to all the recipients, great job. Thank you for participating in the program. We started this a few years ago. I think it was about four years ago, Stephanie. Correct me if I'm wrong. And of course, I'd like to ask you to please say a few words as the leader of the program and the person that really gets to engage in all the activities of Backstage Pass.
Thank you, Commissioner Merman. Yes, just a few words. First, congratulations to this group. It's a quite a bit amount of time and investment to learn about the county, so we always appreciate that. I do want to also, you mentioned the employees that it takes to put this program on. About 50 to 75 employees, my own O and R team, who's fantastic for the behind-the-scenes support that they give us. That's always important, and I really want to thank them. Last but not least, though, the Board of County Commissioners, this program would not be possible without your support. And I will say, lucky me. I came on board in 2017. This program has been in place till about 2013. So it's been, it was a government leadership university. So I've had the privilege and the pleasure of showcasing Hillsborough County to 25 new community leaders every year. And I will tell you, it is such a great experience to see it through their eyes. So I look forward to it every year. Every, every class is different. Everyone enjoys it. And it's really, I learn a lot myself, being with the group. So I want to thank you all. Thank you for joining us this morning. Thank you for your patience. We tried. We thought we would be back in person. So I want to thank everybody for making this happen before the end of the year.
That's great. And it would have been great to have it in person because we could see our future leaders that go through this program. But thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Merman. We do have someone. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Commissioner Overman, I can't hear you.
Thank, thank you. Actually, I had my hand up leftover from before, but it does give me an opportunity to say congratulations. Thank you for your commitment and the time that you spent, and looking forward to seeing your leadership in the future. And I'll let you go there.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, as the commissioner who created government leadership university, I appreciate the dedication and hard work of all the members and, and the con words of Ms. Agliano. Thank you.
Thank you. Please remember, ladies and gentlemen, if you're not speaking, to mute your microphone. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Please mute your microphone. I'll present the last recognition. It's Monica Rodriguez, the president of the Latino Coalition of Tampa Bay here. I do see her.
Yes, I, yes, I am, Commissioner Miller.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
Good. Hillsborough County is a treasure trove of diverse cultures, and the diversity of our community is our great strength. At the core of this is our vibrant Hispanic community. Since 1988, Hispanic Heritage Month has been recognized for 30 days across this nation, and especially here in Hillsborough County. Hispanic people are a virtual part of the fabric of our neighborhoods, making up nearly 30% of our population. It is my honor to present this proclamation to Ms. Rodriguez, which I will read for the record. It reads thusly, "Whereas, one of the greatest treasures of the United States is the diversity of its people, and Hispanic Americans are an intricate part of this nation. And whereas, according to the United States Census Bureau, nearly 61 million Hispanic Americans live within the United States, the nation's largest minority group, ethnic group, and more than 5 million in Florida and over 430,000 in Hillsborough County, nearly 30% of the county's population. And whereas, its vibrant Hispanic influence can be seen in all aspects of American life and culture, including the arts, sciences, business world, academia, and the United States Armed Forces, athletics, and government. And whereas Hispanic Americans contributes, contributions have enriched the country's heritage and helped establish the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity, illustrating all that is best about the nation. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Week was commended by, under President Lyndon Johnson in 1968, to contribute to Hispanic Americans, and whereas it was broadened by President Ronald Reagan in 1988, over a 30-day period, starting September 5th and ending, I'm sorry, starting September 15th and ending October 15th. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the achievement of African, of Hispanic Americans and recognizes the numerous contributions to local Hispanic American leaders who have positively impacted Hillsborough County. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare September 15th through October 15th, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all citizens and visitors to celebrate the numerous contributions of Hispanic Americans to this nation, state, and Hillsborough County, executed the 16th day of September 2020, and signed by all seven county commissioners. Congratulations, Ms. Rodriguez, and thanks for all the work that you and every Hispanic in this county gives back to this county, which I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Yes, I would. It is an honor and a privilege as the president of the Latino Coalition to be representing our community and to receive this proclamation on everyone's behalf. As one said well back in Florida, or better yet, in Hillsborough County, we are not a melting pot. We are a paella. But if we go more diverse with time, it is important that we celebrate our nation, our heritage, and our culture. That is why I want to congratulate the Tampa Hispanic Heritage for promoting, preserving, and celebrating Hispanic heritage in the Tampa Bay since 1979. At the Latino Coalition of Tampa Bay, we are pleased to have representation from every segment of the county, from nonprofits to corporations to small business owners, school district hospitals, and more. As you know, we are facing unprecedented challenges with our communities everywhere affected by the growing COVID-19 pandemic. However, However, we are also coming together to fight this horrible virus. I would like to thank Hillsborough County Office, Ellie Rodriguez, our community liaison, for the great work she has been doing disseminating important information to our communities. We have many organizations assisting our families in different ways. We would like to mention just a couple. Thank you to the Hispanic Health Foundation for donating COVID prevention supplies to our communities at risk. Faith-based organizations like Holson Ministries, Women Restore by God, and many more have been essential in bringing food supplies and food drives to our families. The Sheriff's Hispanic Advisory Council would donate some laptops and computers so no child stays behind when doing early e-learning. Enterprising Latinas have been bringing free COVID testing to the South County. And the Latino Coalition for keeping our families informed and providing access to community resources. Again, there's a lot more agencies helping and assisting our communities, so a big thank you to all of them. Last thing, I would like to congratulate our Mexican families because today they celebrate Mexico independence. God bless, and please keep reaching out to those in need. And thank you again for this proclamation in our Hispanic communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Before you leave, we have some commissioners who want to speak. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I didn't remember the button.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you so much for bringing this forward, Commissioner Miller. And thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for being here with us today. This is a special proclamation to me. As you know, my own family's Hispanic roots go back several generations right here in the Ebor City, Tampa area. And the Hispanic heritage of our area is very rich, like a paella, as you described. And it's a very special part of what makes our Tampa Bay area Tampa Bay. It's so much a piece of our sense of place. And I can't help but smiling that, Commissioner Miller, you started this on September fifteenth, which was my nana's birthday. And I just know that my family in heaven is smiling on this proclamation today. Thank you very much for the proclamation, and thanks to the Hispanic community for all their rich contributions to our area. They are a very important part of what makes us what we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez, thank you so very much. We appreciate you being here. Continue to do the great work that you're doing.
Thank you all again.
Thank you. I want to thank all of our recipients for joining us today. This ends our recognition portion of our agenda. And again, thank you for all you do for Hillsborough County to make this county a better place for everyone, each one of us, regardless of our race, creed, or color, a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise, change to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Board members. We have a few changes this morning. Item F3 is Commissioner Miller's item, which will be deleted, which was to direct the Board of County Commissioners to select a Hillsborough County Board member to participate on the Public School Citing Task Force Committee. That item is deleted. Item F4, Commissioner White's item, is to receive a presentation from the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance. That item is deferred to October seventh. Item F5, an off-the-agenda item by Commissioner Hagan, which was to direct staff to make changes to the Kickstart Grant Program for businesses that were created during 2019 and to change the gross income eligibility. Item D4 is at ten a.m., instead of conducting the second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation agreement with EPGI for the Berry Bay subdivision. Instead of conducting the public hearing, we shall open and continue that until October twenty-first, 2020. We have several items for time certain. Item D1 at ten a.m., to hold a public hearing to approve the fiscal year 2020 Part Capital Improvement Proprietary List of Projects funded by transportation impact fees and to earmark transportation impact fees over the next five years. And then we have several, second of two required public hearings for school concurrency proportionate share mitigation agreement. Item D2 is with D.R. Horton, Inc., for the proposed Mangrove Point Phase One, Two, and Three subdivisions to satisfy school concurrency. Item D3 is also the second of two required public hearings for school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with D.R. Horton for Mangrove Manor Phase One and Two subdivision. Item D4 is the item that we will open and continue to October twenty-first with the school mitigation development agreement with EPGILLC for the Berry Berry subdivision. Item D5, the second of two public hearings for the school board for Hillsborough 301 LLC for the Belmont Multi-Family Development. Item D6, also the second of two required public hearings for D.R. Horton, Inc., for the Copper Creek Townhomes. And then item D7, the second of two public hearings for school concurrency as well with DDFL South Creek LLC, the South Creek Phase Two. At a.m. as well, item D8 is to conduct a public hearing designating approximately one hundred and fifty-eight acres as a brownfield area at the parcels located at 2625 South Ninetieth Street, 2124 South Eightieth and Eighty-Sixth Street, and 9333 Shore Beach Road, and 2633 South Ninetieth Street in Tampa. And item D9 is to conduct a public designation of brownfield areas, eleven point four seven acres, located at 5003 Dover Street in Tampa. And item F2, Commissioner Kemp's item, at ten fifteen, is to approve a resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis in Hillsborough County. Mr. Chairman, those are the changes to the agenda.
Those are the changes.
Motion about Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second about Commissioner Kemp to approve changes to the agenda. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With respect to my item, I just want to thank staff involving the challenges with small businesses that opened in 2019 and qualifying for our Kickstart Grant Program. Some inequities existed, and staff was able to correct them internally, so no actions required. And also, just on personal privilege, I'm going to be stepping out in a minute for a doctor's appointment, but I hope to return by the end of the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. And you're right, our staff does a great job, and they get a lot of things accomplished overnight, it seems like. I mean, just come up with programs overnight to help our citizens. Thank you very much. We have motion about Commissioner Merman, second about Commissioner Kemp to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Obermann?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving to public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, as requested, at the same time when you address the Board, that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a forty-five-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear a public comment at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing the online public comment form at, hold on, let me turn the page, at hillsboroughcounty.org/speakup. You'll be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The Chair will call on speakers by name in order in which they have completed the online public comment form. Prior authorization is on a first-come, first-served basis. An audio call-in number will be provided to the participants that have completed the form after it is received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes allotted for each speaker. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly. Our first speaker is Ann Pointer. Ms. Pointer?
Community support. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Ann. My name is Ann Pointer, and I'm here to give public and community support to pass the resolution to declare racism a public health crisis. Naming racism a public health crisis is an important first step to engaging in a holistic approach to dismantling systemic racism through education and policy reform. The resolution rightly acknowledges that racism has caused and continues to cause persistent disparities between blacks and whites in many areas of life, including housing, education, business, employment, criminal justice, and health. According to Tampa Bay's 2020 Regional Equity Report, higher rates of poverty, unemployment, poor housing, and less access to quality medical care contribute to poor overall health in black communities. As the resolution states, over one hundred studies have linked racism to worse health outcomes among blacks. Although, as the resolution acknowledges, these racial health inequities are nothing new, COVID-19's disparate impact on blacks in terms of higher positivity, hospitalization, and mortality rates has recently brought these disparities into stark relief. In addition, across our country, blacks continue to be disproportionately injured and killed by law enforcement's use of excessive force. The late James Baldwin wrote, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. It is time for our community to face the fact that systemic racism has had its knee on the neck of the black community for far too long. As the late John Lewis said, 'There comes a time when you have to say something, when you have to make a little noise, when you have to move your feet.' This is the time. Please hear our community and our voice, pass this resolution, and let Hillsborough County join the growing call for justice and meaningful policy change." Thank you.
Samuel Wright?
To the Honorable Chairman Leslie Mellon, members of the Board of County Commissioners, I am Dr. Samuel Wright, Senior, and I rise to support the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. Having traveled to the continent of our West Africa in 1995 and visited Gori Island, one of the major slave depots, and having taught courses in African Studies Department at the University of South Florida, it is apparent that the transatlantic slave trade dispersed ten to twelve million Africans throughout the diaspora and created many health challenges for people of the Dr. Hugh all over the world. Those challenges still exist, but systemic racism has been the agenda of the day in America for more than four hundred years. Public health studies have shown that systemic racism African-Americans experienced have created additional undue stress that affects overall physical health. As proven from all humans, this results in a higher prevalence of chronic diseases such as high blood pressure, asthma, diabetes, and a shorter lifespan. We must put in a brunt halt to racism and white privilege every time it surfaces, either in the form of macroaggressions and/or microaggressions. Both racism and white privilege are known to be social determinants of health. Thus, I submit that racism is a public health crisis, and I trust you will support the resolution before you. Many thanks for this opportunity to speak and to address you this morning.
Is Commissioner Hagan still with us? Commissioner Hagan? She's still with us? Mr. Brewer, is there a way you can remove, put down Mr. Hagan's hand, if at all possible?
Unfortunately, sir, I cannot control his hand.
Okay, I just have to remember that he's not here and his hand's still up. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Miller, I'm still here. I'll take it down.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hagan. Thank you. Robert Boiloo?
Yes, hello. This is Robert Boiloo, and I'm here to give public and community support for the passage of the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. The power of naming racism a public health crisis is the first necessary step towards a holistic approach to begin the necessary internal work to address individual and systemic racism through training and policy reform. As Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." According to multiple public health studies, black Americans and people of color bear disproportionate burden in America, test itself in bad health outcomes and lack of economic opportunity due to systemic and institutional racism as the cause. Across the country, black Americans suffer from higher rates of diabetes, hypertension, asthma, and heart disease than white Americans. For generations, black Americans and people of color have faced vast disparities in job opportunities, income, and inherited family wealth. They are less likely to have housing security, quality schools, healthy food, and green spaces. The pandemic of COVID-19 has further revealed the many disparities and inequalities for all to see. Black Americans make up a vast disproportionate number of essential workers who have stayed on the job through the COVID-19 pandemic, thus having the higher risk of contracting the disease. When seeking treatment, black Americans and people of color have fewer options to access health care and often face insurance hurdles that impede their ability to obtain good quality health care services, and thus have six times the rate of COVID-related deaths whites. The late James Baldwin wrote, quote, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." It is time to face this immutable fact: Systemic racism has had its knee on the neck of the African-American community and people of color for centuries, and all of us have a responsibility to acknowledge the community commitment to address it and change it. We cannot let this moment pass without getting into good trouble, as Representative John Lewis of Georgia used to say, by joining the growing call for justice and meaningful policy change. Thank you.
Laura Jones Onukku?
Good morning. My name is Laurie Jones Onukku. I am a member of Bible-based Fellowship Church and a suburban housewife. Unlike the housewives we hear address so frequently during this election cycle, my experience as a suburban housewife is distinctive because I am a black mother. I live in a community where I see how my son is treated based on the color of his skin. I not easily believed when we moved here over twenty years ago that he would not face racism at all. However, I have seen how he has faced racial profiling from an early age. I have found that my son is highly likely to be stopped in our own neighborhood, whether riding with his fiancee in her sporty car and getting pulled over for a brake light, being out and then having a car search, or just driving while black. As a mother of a black son, I know that systemic racism exists. Yes, even in the cushy suburbs of New Tampa, I live in fear that my son could say success and force at the hands of the police over some minor offense. So every time he drives off, every time, I give the same lecture: Buckle your seatbelt, do not play your music loud, go the speed limit. Why? Because systemic bias and believing exists in my cushy suburban neighborhood. Commissioners, I believe that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. This is why I am here to support the resolution to declare racism a public health crisis. Thank you. I yield my time.
Rosa Webster?
Hello, I'm Rosa Webster, Bible-based Fellowship Church of Temple Terrace. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment. As you, our elected officials, prepare to vote on the resolution to declare racism a public health crisis, which I prayerfully pray- As you, our elected officials, prepare to vote on the resolution to declare racism a public health crisis, which I prayerfully pray will be adopted in acknowledgement that the issues exist and that the concerns are real, it's the desire of your constituents and our community, a united voice, that, once this resolution is adopted, it will be fortified by you developing a clear plan of action, which will include the implementation of tangible and measurable goals, allocating more resources into the public health infrastructure, which will specifically target social determinants of health, as well as focus on the disparities that perpetuate through the existing policies and procedures. We hope that you would demand that the official departments will strategize the data to provide an in-depth perspective that you as governing officials will have to be able to understand the disparities. In addition to developing plans to tackle the racial inequities and engage in the community, far too long in action indifference and institutional racism has harmed the generations of black and brown people. We are prayerful that you, as elected officials, will walk the talk, not just pass the resolution, but serve as resolving agents. As you vote, please be conscious of the impact that this resolution will have on our community. We thank you for how you serve, and we are prayerful that you will pass and adopt, as well as support and fortify, the resolution to declare racism as a public health crisis. I yield my time.
Gerald White Senior.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gerald White, Hillsborough County Community Activist, and I'm also a 37-year employee of Tampa Electric Company, serving as the Superintendent and Generation at Big Van Power Station. I'm speaking in support of the resolution on racism and its negative health impact on black community. Racism is a primary part of our living reality as black people. Racism has been and still is a daily concern and a day-to-day intrusion on the lives of black people. Racism is a sickness that has caused sickness for black people. Racism is our high blood pressure, racism's our daily stress, heart attacks, and our daily anxiety. In other words, racism has been a key factor in making us sick as black people. It needs to end quickly. Racism needs to end now. We, black people, are sick and tired of racism. I, Gerald White, Hillsborough County Community Activist, support the resolution as read. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Brad Castle.
Hi, my name is Brad Castle, and I am the Lead Path to the Tampa First Seventh Avenue Church, as well as the Co-President of Hillsborough County Organization for Progress and Equality. I'm here today to support and give my support for the resolution that racism is a public health crisis. I personally have been involved with Advent Health Tampa and Carrollwood Facilities in Community Health Need Assessments. And as we've gone through these health assessments with community leaders, we have seen disproportionately how black, our black communities, especially the middle lower-class black communities, have suffered with conditions and inequalities and lack of opportunities, which has led to health issues, major health issues. And so also, in my church, we work with Feeding Tampa Bay, and we have a food bank, and we deliver and give out two, up to two tons of, or one ton of fresh produce every week. And I've been there and been able to talk to members all across our community, people in need, those who are connecting with different folks, and I've connected as well. And I have found from some of the folk who have come from our black communities, that they don't have access, that they need to have access to quality food. There's inequalities, and that is disproportionate. And I believe that because of these inequalities, because of the systemic racism that they have suffered through, it is becoming a public health crisis. So I am here in support of the resolution to declare racism as a public health crisis. Thank you.
Staff, was that the last person that has signed up for public comment?
Yes, it was, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. That closes our public comment section of the agenda. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith to approve the consent agenda. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan. Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item is Item D1, our public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 Heart Capital Improvement Program, and Jim Hudak is here to present that item.
Good morning, Hudak.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Hudak, Capital Programs Department. Commissioners, Item D1, we're asking you to hold a public hearing and approve the FY2020 Heart Capital Improvement Program list of projects funded by the transportation impact fees per the interlocal agreement with Heart. In addition, we're asking you to earmark up to $59,314.68 in transportation impact fees over the next five years, subject to actual collections, for the Heart Capital Improvement Program in accordance with the Hillsborough County Consolidated Impact Assessment Program ordinance. Approval of this item will earmark up to $59,314.68 in transportation impact fees over the next five years, subject to actual collections in accordance with the Hillsborough County Consolidated Impact Assessment Program ordinance. We do have representatives from Heart here today, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
This is a public hearing. Did we have anyone sign up to speak on Item D1? I don't see anyone. Item D1. This closes the public hearing.
No. So moved, second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve Item D1. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan. Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next items, school concurrency, this second public hearings, and these public hearings you will be to vote on this time. Item D2, the first one, Adam Gormley is here to present these items.
Mr. Gormley, good morning.
Thank you, good morning, sir. Good morning, Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Items D2 through D7 will all be public hearings, with the exception of D4, to be continued to consider proportionate share agreements to satisfy school concurrency for various development projects. Each of these projects will be making a contribution that will go to the, to the middle school and elementary school UU in Waterset. This is, this is a project that is in the third year of the school district's five-year work program. And with that, I'll introduce that the first item is an agreement with D.R. Horton, Inc., regarding the proposed Mangrove Point Phase 1, 2, and 3 subdivision. This project will be making a contribution in the amount of $390,425 to create 14 middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of this project. This is a public hearing, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. We have one person that's signed up to speak, Kevin Reilly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Reilly, 401 East Jackson Street, Street 2100. I'm just here for the applicant to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing. Much your pleasure.
App approval, second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve Item D2. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan. Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Item D3.
Commissioners, Item D3 is an agreement with D.R. Horton, Inc. This is for the proposed Mangrove Manor Phase 1 and 2 subdivision. Pursuant to the agreement, the project would make a contribution of $501,975 to create 18 middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. This is a public hearing, I'm available for any questions.
This is a public hearing. One person signed up, Mr. Reilly.
Good morning, Commissioners, again Kevin Reilly. Unless you have any questions, I yield my time.
Okay, that's the last speaker. Close the public hearing, much your pleasure.
App approval, second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve Item D3. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan. Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise.
The next item is Item D4. In this case, we ask that you open and continue the public hearing for until October 21st, 2020.
Mr. Gormley.
Yes, sir. Item D4 is a agreement, development agreement posed with EPG1 LLC for the Berry Bay subdivision. We ask that this hearing be opened and continued to the October 21st BOCC meeting at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, Mr. Reilly.
Again, Commissioners, Kevin Reilly for the record. Unless there are any questions, I yield my time.
There's no further speakers signed up for.
No approval.
Oh, wait a minute, this is going to be continued, this is to be continued.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, this will be continued until October 21st, 2020. Ms. Wise.
Thank you, sir. Item D5, the next public hearing as well, Adam.
Yes, Item D5 is an agreement with Hillsborough 301 LLC for the proposed Belmont Multi-Family Development Project. This project would make a payment of $1,292,126 to create 35 elementary school student stations and 13 middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. I'm available for any questions, this is a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. One person signed up to speak, Mr. Reilly.
Pardon me, Commissioners, I actually, you should not have been signed up for this item. I yield my time.
Well, you did, but that's okay. We'll forgive you at this time, okay? Let's close the public hearing.
No approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman to approve Item D5. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan. Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is D6, also another public hearing, the same matter, Adam.
Mr. Gormley.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item D6 is an agreement with D.R. Horton, Inc., for the proposed Copper Creek Town Homes Project. Pursuant to the agreement, the project would make a payment of $135,451 to create three elementary school student stations and two middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. This is a public hearing, I'm available for any questions.
This is a public hearing, we have one speaker signed up. Mr. Reilly.
Good morning, Commissioners, again I yield my time unless there are any questions.
Okay, that closes the public hearing, much your pleasure.
App approval, second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve Item D6. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan. Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the final of the public hearings for the school concurrency proportionate chair agreement, and Adam, Item D7.
Good morning.
Item D7 is an agreement with DBFL South Creek LLC for the South Creek Phase 2 Multi-Family Project. Pursuant to the agreement, the project would make a payment in the amount of $418,313 to create 15 middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. This is a public hearing, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, we have one person signed to speak, Mr. Reilly.
Good morning, Commissioners. If there are no questions, I yield my time and bid you all a wonderful day.
You have a great day, I'll close the public hearing.
No approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp, I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner Overman, I'm sorry, to approve Item D7. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan. Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item, D8 and D9, are public hearings for brownfield areas. Yaksha Pechrovich is here to present Item D8 and D9.
Good morning, sir, you recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yaksha Pechrovich, Economic Development Department. This is the second public hearing for the designation of Brownfield, which is located at Parcels at 2625 98th Street, 2124 South 86th Street, 9333 Suarez Road, and 2633 South 98th Street in Tampa. On January 24th, 2020, Colonnade Crosstown LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the Parcels as a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 158 acres and is shown on the projected map. Just shared the map. Brownfield area is a real property, the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by actual or perceived environmental contamination. The applicant plans to develop the property as a 1.87 million square feet mixed-use project. The designation provides certain potential benefits to the applicant associated with cleanup of the site. There is no financial impact to the county associated with this designation. At the second public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners, the Board must consider the following in determining the area to be designated. One, whether the brownfield area warrants economic development and has a reasonable potential for such activities, whether the proposed area to be designated represents a reasonably focused approach and is not overly large in geographic coverage, whether the area has potential to interest the private sector in participating in rehabilitation, and whether the area contains sites or parts of sites suitable for limited recreational, open space, cultural, or historic preservation purposes. An advertised community meeting on this designation was held by means of communications media technology on August 19th, 2020. No public comment was received. The first public hearing was held on September 2nd, 2020, and no public comment was received. Staff has reviewed the application and the applicable criteria, and staff recommendation is for approval over the resolution designating the brownfield area. I along with the applicant's representative, Vivian Arenas, battles with county attorney's offices available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, we had no one that signed up for this, am I correct? Am I correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Reilly.
Okay, thank you very much. It closes the public hearing, much your pleasure. Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve Item D8. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll, Item D8.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan. Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith. Commissioners, Smith.
Chief.
Motion carried five to zero.
Okay, Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is Item G9, also a second public hearing for the brownfield area. Yaksha will handle this one as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yaksha Pechrovich, Economic Development. This is the second public hearing for a designation of a brownfield area, which is located at Parcels at 5003 Dover Street in Tampa. On April 14th, 2020, American- On April fourteen, two thousand and twenty, American Roman numeral seventeen LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the Parcels as a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately eleven point forty-seven acres and is shown on the projected map. The brownfield area is a real property. The expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by actual perceived environmental contamination. The applicant plans to develop the property as a vehicle recycling, vehicle parts sales, and a class-three materials recycling facility and transfer station. The designation provides certain potential benefits to the applicant associated with the cleanup of the site. There is no financial impact to the county associated with this designation. At the second public hearing before about Board of County Commissioners, the board must consider the following in determining the area to be designated. Whether the brownfield area warrants economic development and has a reasonable potential for such activities, whether the proposed area to be designated represents a reasonably focused approach and is not overly large in geographic coverage, whether the area has potential to interest the private sector in participating in rehabilitation, and whether the area contains sites or parts of sites suitable for limited recreational, open space, cultural, historical preservation purposes. An advertised community meeting on this designation was held by means of communications media technology in August twentieth, two thousand and twenty. No public comment was received. The first public hearing was held on September second, two thousand and twenty, and no public comment was received. Staff has reviewed the application and the applicable criteria, and staff recommendation is for approval over the resolution designating the brownfield area. I along with applicant's representative and Vivian Arenas Battle's County Attorney's Office are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. We had no one to sign up to speak on this issue. What's your pleasure? What's about Commissioner Kemp? Sorry, Commissioner Overman, who seconded?
Me, Murman.
Mr. Murman seconds the motion. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan? Kent?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Are we having a problem with Commissioner Smith's phone or microphone, anything like that?
It looked like she had intermittent signal there for a bit. She may be having difficulty relogging back in.
Yes, I saw her screen freeze.
Okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is Commissioner Kemp's item, approved of resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in Hillsborough County.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you, Sheriff Miller. And thank you to everyone, all the speakers who came to public comment this morning for sharing your wisdom and experiences with us today. This resolution is about racism and public health, and it speaks to an urgent issue at this time and here in Hillsborough County. The historic and present racial inequities that exist in our areas of health, safety, and well-being. This resolution is the work of Our Voice, Our Community, a group of community members and faith leaders of various congregations in Hillsborough County. A letter of support signed onto by a hundred and ninety-three members of our community, Our Voice, is included with the item. Additional letters of support are provided by Hope, Dean Donna Peterson of the USF College of Public Health, and Dr. Douglas Holt of the Florida Department of Health. I'd like to say also a resolution was resubmitted this morning to my office that had been submitted to the County Commission some months ago from the Florida Medical Association Medical Student Governing Council. They had done a resolution recognizing racism as a public health issue and resolving to combat racism and promote racial injustice or justice. And so they contacted us this morning because they wanted also to be part of this. Three leaders of Our Voice, Our Community are here today to present the resolution. First, Reverend Anthony White. Anthony White is the lead pastor of the Bible-Based Fellowship Church located in Carrollwood. He's been serving as pastor there for seven years. He also serves as the co-president of Hope. Reverend White is an advocate for those considered the least of these. He and his wife Sonia have two adult children and have resided in the Tampa area since nineteen ninety-six. He's a graduate of USF and the Dallas Theological Seminary. Also, Dr. Sheila Simmons Tribble, retired director of Civil and Human Rights and Policy Analyst in Washington, D.C. She's worked to promote social justice issues throughout the U.S. as well as in the Caribbean, Canada, Africa, and Europe. She's a member of the Bible-Based Fellowship Church Carrollwood and serves as a team member of the church in justice ministry and an active member of Hope. She's a graduate of Fisk University and the University of Oregon. Sheila Tribble is the widow of the late Dr. Israel Ike Tribble, who served as a Tampa community activist and a social justice warrior for many years. And Antoinette Davis is a woman of God who is wife of Casey Davis, a mother of five school-age children, four sons, and one daughter. She's living out her call to do justice by leading the ministry at Bible-Based Fellowship Church, and she's been a member for twenty-two years. She's also an active member of Hope and serves on the board. Antoinette graduated from USF with a bachelor's of science and accounting and has been a resident of Hillsborough County since nineteen ninety-seven, when she moved from Miami, Florida to attend USF. And how lucky we are to have all of these people in our community moving this issue forward. I'm going to now turn to Reverend White to say a few words, and then the four of us will read the resolution for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, and to Mr. Chair and all the county commissioners. As stated, my name is Anthony White. It's a great honor to be with you this morning and representing the community, the faith community in Hillsborough County. As was stated also, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied to a single, in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. You know, I frequently am privileged to hear some of the stories of members of our community as they share challenges that they have to navigate to achieve fair and equal opportunity. And then other times, I'm closer than perhaps I'd like to see those injustices up front. There's one story like that of Mr. Wesley Hollowings, who is a relative of mine and a resident of the Whispering Oaks Nursing Home located in Hillsborough County. Mr. Hollowings is eighty-three years old, recently tested positive for COVID-nineteen. He is one of several residents at the Whispering Oaks facility who has tested positive. What makes his story different is that his family, his spouse of over sixty years, who's ninety, has been unable to make contact with him or even to make contact with a nurse because the phone lines at Whispering Oaks have been down for the past six days, today included. This would hardly, I believe, be the case in other communities within Hillsborough County. However, most of the residents at Whispering Oaks are persons of color. His story is one example of many of the residents in Hillsborough County and members in our congregation that periodically share with me. It is one reason we began the forum that we did a few years ago entitled Our Community, Our Voice, to hear and to address matters of racial and health disparities impact our communities. In the wake of the George Floyd killing, we held such a forum on racism as a public health crisis. It was a forum, it was that forum which spawned this initiative and began a groundswell of support in our community. As you know, a public health crisis is when the problem affects large numbers of people, threatens health over a long term, and requires the adoption of large-scale solutions. We must ask ourselves the question, how is racism operating in Hillsborough County? And our decision-making processes and our structures and our policies? It is important that we see racism not just as individual acts by avenging justice by a few, but as a system of power that obstructs opportunity and assigns value based on race. We must ask ourselves what patterns and practices are reinforcing systemic racism within housing, education, employment, credit, healthcare, and criminal justice. Racism not only adversely affects communities of color, but it saps the strength of a society and our county through the waste of vital resources. It is no surprise that our scriptures are replete with verses that address justice, such as those in Amos, chapter five, verse twenty-four, which says, "Let justice roll down like waters and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream." So we must ask ourselves the question, what will we do about it? To this end, I am pleased to present this resolution in joint effort to you today and to ask that you make this declaration to name racism as a public health crisis in Hillsborough County. It is a necessary first step that impacts all of us, especially those like Mr. Wesley Hollowings, who has been a resident of Hillsborough County for over sixty-one years. As I close, as been stated, I'd like to again say the quote by James Baldwin, who eloquently stated that not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. I urge you today to take another step forward to change that will work for a more just and equitable Hillsborough County for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend White, for those words. I'll begin a reading of the Declaration of Racism as a Public Health Crisis, the resolution. Whereas the Hillsborough County Commission has demonstrated, has a demonstrated track record of promoting racial equity, inclusion, and diversity in county government. This commitment is exemplified in Hillsborough County's Human Rights Ordinance, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of race and employment, public accommodations, real estate transactions, and county contracting and procurement. This commitment is further exemplified through the commission's recent action to develop an independent equity profile for Hillsborough County that will identify and highlight racial disparities across varying aspects and dimensions. And whereas Hillsborough County has also had a demonstrated or has demonstrated a commitment to providing for the health of its residents by establishing and funding a healthcare plan for residents of limited income and assets. And whereas these initiatives are in direct response to addressing race as an identifying stumbling block for career advancement and employment opportunities in Hillsborough County. And this lack of opportunity is also directly linked to root causes of poverty and constricted economic mobility. And please continue, Reverend White.
Whereas race is a social construct with no biological basis. And whereas racism is a negative social system with multiple dimensions, including individual prejudices that are internalized or interpersonal and systemic racism that is institutional or structural and is a system of structuring opportunity and assigning value based on the social interpretation of how one looks. And whereas racism unfairly disadvantages specific individuals and communities while unfairly giving advantages to other individuals and communities and saps the strength of the whole society through the waste of human resources. And Hillsborough County's collective prosperity depends upon the equitable access to opportunity for every resident regardless of the color of their skin. And whereas racism causes persistent discrimination and disparate outcomes in many areas of life, including housing, education, business, employment, and criminal justice, and and an emerging body of research demonstrates that racism itself is a social determinant of health. And believe Dr. Tribble? Dr. Tribble?
Wait. Um. Um, perhaps Pastor White, would you like to continue?
Sure. And whereas the U.S. Census and the Florida Department of Health report that in Hillsborough County, residents of color experience dramatically higher unemployment rates. Blacks, ten percent, Hispanic, seven, whites, five percent face a higher poverty rate as a community. Blacks, twenty-four percent, Hispanic, twenty-one percent, white, ten percent. Have lower home ownership rates. Black, thirty-seven percent, Hispanic, forty-eight, white, sixty-four percent. Significantly more likely to experience food insecurity. Black, forty-three percent, Hispanic, forty-six, white, twenty-six. Have substantially less annual median income. Black, thirty-nine thousand, seven forty-six, Hispanic, forty-four thousand, four forty-five, white, sixty thousand, eight twenty-nine. And whereas through the leadership of Hillsborough County State Attorney Andrew Warren and public defender Julian Holt, Hillsborough County is committed to the elimination of racial disparities in the criminal justice system to prioritize racial equity in our decision-making processes to acknowledge that black and minority communities have borne the burdens of inequitable social, environmental, economic, and criminal justice policies, practices, and investments to understand that the legacy of these inequitable policies have caused deep disparities, harm, and mistrust, and to recognize that racial justice requires a system that treats everyone equally. And whereas institutional racism and discrimination in Florida and Hillsborough County have also exasperated a health divide between white residents and residents of color. And when people are healthy, they create strong, successful communities. Being healthy is about more than genetics. Our health depends on the conditions of our daily life, where we live, work, and play. And these conditions are not the same for everyone in Hillsborough County. Compared to white residents, black residents are more likely to be overweight or obese and die of heart disease, cancer, or stroke. Twice as many black residents die from diabetes. Hispanic residents are twice as likely to feel unsafe in their neighborhood. And black and Hispanic babies are more likely to die in their first year of life. Health comes down to whether the conditions of our daily life present us with options or obstacles. And
Ms. Davis?
Whereas a contemporary example of this disparity is highlighted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic and its impact on the black community. According to a recent CDC morbidity and mortality weekly report study, blacks are hospitalized at a much higher rate than other groups, and the death rate of blacks in that study is twice the rate of whites. And according to the Florida Department of Health, black residents of the state are disproportionately more likely to die of COVID-nineteen. While black residents make up fifteen point five percent of the population, they represent nineteen point four of the Floridians who have died from the virus. This disparity is even more acute when looking at younger residents. For example, black residents make up eighteen percent of Florida's population from the ages twenty-five to forty-four, while representing forty-four percent of the deaths in that age range. Whereas more than one hundred studies have linked racism to worse health outcomes. And whereas a June twenty-twenty report from the Florida Department of Health of Hillsborough County Office of Health Equity states that these racial health inequities are nothing new in our nation's history in which blacks, indigenous, and other people of color have been marginalized for over four hundred years. And whereas the Hillsborough County Board of County Commission stands with the resident of Hillsborough County of Hillsborough County with the Declaration of Racism as a Public Health Crisis, and acknowledges that all lives will matter in America only when there is recognition and affirmation that black lives matter. Now, therefore.
Be resolved and ordered that the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, one, assert that racism is a public health crisis affecting our entire community, that we work to progress as an equity and justice-oriented organization with the Board of County Commissioners and the county administrator and its staff and leadership, continuing to identify specific activities of further enhanced diversity and ensure anti-racism principles across county leadership, staffing, and contracting. Promote equity through all policies approved by the county commission, and enhance educational efforts aimed at understanding, addressing, and dismantling racism and how it affects the delivery of human and social services, economic development, and public safety. Continue to advocate locally and through the National Association of Counties for relevant policies that improve health in black communities and support local, state, regional, and federal initiatives to advance efforts to dismantle systemic racism. To further work to solidify alliances and partnerships with other organizations that are confronting racism, and encourage other local, state, and regional, national entities to recognize racism as a public health crisis. To support community efforts to amplify issues of racism and engage actively and authentically with communities of color wherever they live. To always promote and support policies that prioritize the health of all people, especially people of color, by mitigating exposure to adverse childhood experiences. To promote racial equity and training with the goal of reaching all county commissioners, county leadership and staff. To encourage racial equity training among all community partners, grantees, vendors, and contractors, and to identify clear goals and objectives, including periodic reports to the Board of County Commissioners to assess progress and to capitalize on opportunities to further advance racial equity. Further resolve that the Board of County Commissioners supports all additional efforts in Hillsborough County and the state of Florida nationwide to address racism and public health disparities due to racial inequities. Before I make a motion regarding this, I'd like to ask for both State Attorney Andrew Warren, who signed on to this, and public defender Julian Holt for brief remarks regarding this. Mr. Warren?
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
First, let me thank Commissioner Kemp and the distinguished guests for introducing this important resolution, and to the entire commission for considering it today. Above the front entrance of the United States Supreme Court is an inscription that reads equal justice under the law. Not only is this a fundamental principle of our democracy, it really should be the North Star for any attorney and for prosecutors as part of our mission, public safety, fairness, and justice. We can never achieve true fairness and justice in our system as long as there are racial disparities within the criminal justice system. And despite a lot of progress that we've made over the past generation and progress that we've made in Hillsborough County over the past three and a half years in addressing and reducing racial disparities, the fact is they still exist. We have disparities in arrests, disparities in sentencing, disparities into entry into diversion programs, and disparities in outcomes. And we know that while the criminal justice system itself contributes to some of these disparities, those problems often result from disparities outside the criminal justice system. A lack of economic opportunities, a lack of access to high-quality education for every child, lack of affordable housing, lack of robust healthcare. And these problems outside of the system disproportionately affect minority and economically depressed communities, and then result in pronounced disparities in the criminal justice system. So I'm supportive of this resolution because not only does it identify mine and my colleague, public defender Holt's commitment to eliminating racial disparities, but it identifies the fact that these disparities exist in our system, and more importantly, it proposes solutions based on the inescapable reality that the problems in the criminal justice system aren't intricably intertwined with economic, educational, housing, and healthcare issues in our community. I'm confident that working together, we can continue to advance towards that goal of equal justice under the law for every man, woman, and child in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Holt?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and distinguished guests. This year, I'm completing my 28th year as the public defender. More importantly, I've actually been a member of our community my entire life. I grew up during the John Kennedy, Martin Luther King days. I grew up through desegregation here in Hillsborough County and across the state of Florida. Many of you, because of my last name, may not know, but that I come from a Hispanic background, grew up primarily in West Tampa, and so obviously, when we talk about black and brown lives, I very much recognize exactly what we're talking about. I want to thank Commissioner Kemp for thinking of including the public defender and the public defender's office as it relates to this resolution. I would be remiss if I didn't say out loud that my 28 years as the public defender have been, I think, successful because of the tremendous support that I've actually had from the Board of County Commission in the areas that we tremendously have to deal with as it relates to indigent clients that our office represents, substance abuse, mental health, lack of educational opportunities, lack of homes, all types of problems that we have recognized for 28 years have really created tremendous inequities in our criminal justice system, but also in our community. But each and every one of you who I have gone to and have asked for support and help, and just as recent as this year during this pandemic, the tremendous support you've shown towards this office in allowing us to continue to be able to engage in a meaningful way with our clients, to help them to continue their treatment, to continue to help them through these very difficult times, whether it be their health, their mental health, other needs that they may have. For that, I want to say thank you today and let this community know that you have, in fact, as this resolution says, been tremendously proactive in an area to assist our community. What I love about this resolution and why I hope that we are able to move this forward today is that what it means is that we will really have a holistic approach to our community, that we will not only look at the criminal justice system as Julie Holt, the public defender, but that in fact, we will address our holistic community forward in a meaningful way. That for me is very important because as many of you know, I am going to finish up my next term, and then I'm going to join as a member of this community, and I will continue to assist and help in any way that I can in order to ensure that we finally achieve the dream that every one of us should have as citizens of this community. Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Merman and other guests and members, you know that several years ago, you allowed Safe and Sound Hillsborough to begin here in Hillsborough County, and you chose to make that mission of that commission one of a public health crisis as it related to our youth. So today, what I see is an expansion of what you started several years ago for that support and for that vision that you had several years ago, I want to also thank you. Today, I promise to you that Julie Holt, the public defender, Julie Holt, the Chair of Safe and Sound Hillsborough, Julie Holt, the member of community, we will join you, support you, and work with you towards the goals of this resolution. They will not just be words that you will hear from me today. You will proactively see my office engaged in helping to move forward the goals of this resolution. I thank you for continuing to be proactive, caring members of our community, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Thank you, Mr. Warren. And just to wrap up, thank you Reverend White, Anthony White. I want to recognize Dr. Sheila Simmons Tribble, who I think somehow dropped off, but who has been very important in doing this, her work, her words. Thank you, Ms. Davis. And I'd like to thank also my aide Laura Lawson for having very much shepherded this through. And with that, I'll make the motion to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. And I'd actually like to make a substitute motion. And the reason being is that Dr. Tribble had a paragraph that's near and dear to my heart that was not read. And either I'd like to recognize her to read that paragraph because we do not want it to be precluded from this resolution. It's in the written backup, but I did not hear it read. And it was the paragraph that began after Reverend White read Options and Obstacles, and there's a paragraph that begins, whereas black communities, working-class residents. Dr. Tribble, would you be interested in reading that out loud to add it to the resolution?
Well, first and foremost, Mr. Overman, you don't want to make a substitute motion because that kills the whole process of
Okay. Okay. The needs to be amended?
So it will be an amendment to the motion.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion and ask that that section be added to the resolution.
Now, what section is that?
Whereas should, whereas black communities, working-class residents, and those that suffer from disabilities are more likely to experience poor health outcomes as a consequence of the social determinants of health, health inequities stemming from economic instability, educational, education, physical environment, living in food and broadband, deserts, and inadequate access to healthcare systems. In Hillsborough County, two-thirds of these residents live far from a healthy food source and lack many adequate transportation, limiting access to these needs. Safe and affordable homes are essential for well-being, but half the renters pay more than 30% of their income in rent and face housing challenges. People are in better health when they can get healthcare services, yet 33% of residents with household incomes under $25,000 don't have health insurance. Income has a strong influence on health and longevity, and due to a history of discriminatory policies, residents of color are more likely to experience economic hardships than white residents.
Thank you.
Is that it, Commissioner Overman?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
The amendment, I question whether we need it, but if we do, since it's all part of the resolution, it was just mistakenly not read. So I yield to you, Commissioner Miller, do we really need to amend the resolution?
Was it written in the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, well, if it's written in the resolution, it does not have to be read again.
Okay, then I withdraw the amendment, but I just want to make sure, since it's so close to my heart, those topics, I wanted to make sure it was heard by the public and by our distinguished bodies that are here. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you very much. I am very grateful to the community leaders and the groups that have worked together with Commissioner Kemp to bring this forward, Reverend White, Ms. Antoinette Davis, and everyone in the Bible-based Fellowship Church and their justice ministry, and the organizations that pulled together so many other groups to work on this and bring us such a, such a well-crafted, well-thought-out resolution, which is, and also, I want to thank Commissioner Kemp and your office, Laura Lawson, for all your research and work into this issue, informing us and the community, and putting this important step together in such a meaningful way so that this action today can affect real change and progress in our community. It's a great step in the larger movement, a step that many other communities are taking throughout our country. More than 20 cities and counties and at least three states, Michigan, Ohio, and Wisconsin, have declared racism a public health crisis. The American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the American College of Emergency Physicians also have declared institutional racism an urgent public health issue in statements and vowed to eradicate racism and discrimination in healthcare. So really proud of us to be joining this movement, this step in this movement. And while this idea has been gaining ground for three decades, it has long been known that black people endure many health impacts at rates that are disproportionate to their numbers in the population. But in the current moment, it has become undeniably obvious that racism is responsible for the fact that black people disproportionately suffer serious impacts, health impacts. As we deal with COVID, we see the kinds of evidence in the data that Ms. Davis read in her part of this resolution, that predominantly black counties are seeing three times the rate of infection and six times the rate of COVID-related death as white counties. This overarching policy that we're considering today of declaring racism as a public health crisis provides a meaningful framework for being proactive. And saying, as Ms. Davis pointed out in the end of this, saying that racism is a public health crisis is saying that black lives matter. And saying that as a society, as a community, as a county, is an important step towards real substantive change. And so I'm very pleased to be supporting this and thank everyone for all the work that went into bringing us this very well-crafted, important step forward today.
Commissioner Kemp?
Sorry.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. And I'll keep this short because much of what I was going to say has been said, and so much has actually been said within the resolution. I am proud to be part of this Board of Commission and with Commissioner Miller's leadership to have rolled out and gotten approved the Equity Profile Project that we are rolling out at the beginning of the year, the partnerships that we have with Hope, and as well as so many in Safe and Sound, and so many different organizations that are really looking at this with a clear lens to see what we look like in a mirror and begin to stay with the adoption of this resolution, to begin to put together policies that will make a substantive difference for the black community, for our communities of color in general, but in all of our communities so that we can be successful. I truly believe when we treat each other fairly as we wish to be treated, everyone wins. And if we really look at everything that we do as we are moving forward, not only in transportation, but affordable housing, juvenile justice, the human trafficking, all of the issues we've been discussing this year, if we work through that with our partners and with our communities to raise the awareness of the importance of treating each other fairly, I think we will do a better job of taking care of our citizens and opening up opportunities for our public health and success. So thank you very much for bringing this forward, Commissioner Kemp, and Hope, and all of those. Dr. Tribble, it's great to see you again. And I just want to thank you for bringing this forward and looking forward to supporting this resolution.
Okay, I'm going to make my comments, and then we'll vote. That's where we're going to end it, in my comments. I want to thank Bible Base for bringing forth this resolution to the county commission. Today, I want to thank the Honorable Julian Holt and Andrew Warren for being here to speak today. We truly appreciate you being here. I thought about what I was going to say today about this resolution, and I still didn't write a speech, so I'm just going to say what's on my heart. And if I make someone mad, I'm sorry, but I'm saying what's on my heart. I am one of the oldest, except for a couple of people, the oldest elected officials in Hillsborough County. I'm not talking about service as elected official, I'm talking about age. I'm 69 years old. I was born and raised in Tampa. I live a half a block from where I went to high school. I only left four years, and I went into military service. And many of you know, I've talked about when I was in the Air Force, being called the N-word while I stood there in a military uniform during the Vietnam War. I'm the only one on this commission that the color of my skin has been a deterrent to me moving about in any capacity, whether I work for a private business or to me moving about in any capacity, whether I work for a private business or in the public sector. As a matter of fact, in the company I worked for, my thumb, the thumb was put on me to be held down in any type of mobility. And right now, the person that did that sits as the Chief of Staff of the President of the United States. That was probably, to me, one of the most downtrodden moments of my life, when I had the ability, the knowledge, and the education to move up, and I was not able to do that. I have the only one probably on this commission, and I know I'm the only one, because of the color of my skin, I faced racism, faced all kinds of deplorable acts against me because of the color of my skin. I have, I was born doing segregation. I've watched segregation throughout this county, throughout the state, in this country. I've told you all about the mere fact of having to go to get food and restaurants in Tampa, and when you had to get it through what they call the pigeon hole. We were not able to go in the restaurants because of the mere fact of that I was, I've witnessed and been a part of having colored water fountains compared to white water fountains. One stood higher than the other ones, and one's water was cooler than the others. I faced all that. I can sit here and tell you about racism being a health issue because the mere fact is that I have faced that out by the elbow also. I live in a community, have lived in a community where there were not grocery stores to get adequate food for the Black community, and the only food we could get was from the mom and pop stores. And I'm not knocking the mom and pop stores because that was the only access we had to that because we had nowhere to transportation to get to them. And the mom and pop stores are the best they could, but they could not buy the quality of food that the others could get because they just couldn't afford it. But they gave access to meals to the Black community that was a terror to their health. I was a part of that. I've come out of that now, but I was a part of that. And that's probably why, along with the other things that come along in my family, I'm a three-time cancer survivor. My wife's a two-time cancer survivor, and my daughter, because it's probably hereditary, is five-time cancer survivor, and battling cancer right now. But fortunately enough, she didn't have to go through what I had to go through, and I didn't have insurance at one time. She has insurance. Oh, yeah, I had to face that too. I didn't have insurance. My first year in the legislature, I created the Commission on Minority Health in the State of Florida. It was funded, it was commissioned to be held at Florida University and hired staff to do the studies of healthcare disparities among Blacks, Hispanics, and other people of color in the State of Florida. And it was moving well and putting together a program and writing articles and writing whatever it had to write to talk about those disparities. Unfortunately, when Jeb Bush was elected governor, he vetoed the funding, and the whole commission was dismantled. So I know what that's all about. I have been racially profiled. I was racially profiled as late as a year and a half ago. I'm a county commissioner, chair of the county commission. On the back of my car is a license plate that says retired, State Senate. And the Hillsborough County sheriff one night pulled my wife and I over, we were coming from a function, got out the car, shining his light into my car, all through the back seats, wanted to know where I was coming from and where I was going that time of night. And I asked him, was I speeding? I think you were. But he asked me, is this your car? Excuse me? Is this your car? And I'm chairman of the county commission, and this young white sheriff officer wanted to know, was the car I was driving, because it was nice, was that my car? I have six grandchildren, and I preach to them each and every day, even though they've gotten older, what you should do if you pulled over by the sheriff. And two of them, father is a police officer, he has to tell them the same thing. So I have faced racism, I have faced racial profiling, I have faced the health issues. I've worked my butt off to make a difference in this county and this state for almost 50 years. I have still been called the N-word, so I know what this is all about. And that's why on September 6th, when I came before this board, I said, we can do all the things we want to talk about, we can do all of the profiling, we can do all of the resolutions, but until all of us, regardless of our race, creed, color, national origin, income, sit down at a table of brotherhood and sisterhood to start talking about our differences, we're not going to go anywhere. Until we come back and bring this country together while it's being divided by a guy in the White House who's going to try to run an election by divisiveness, we're not going to go anywhere. And that's why I'm working with staff and working with City Councilman Orlando Goos to put together some type of committee to, we can start working on trying to bring some peace and harmony within Hillsborough County. I won't be a county commissioner, but I will still be doing that. So I am going to support this resolution. However, there is a bitter peel that burst in my mouth, and that bitter peel was the direction of how this resolution came to this body. And there are others in this community have that bitter taste in their mouth also. Because the mere fact, it appears that it came through a political process, and that's not good. Racism is not about politics. Domestic racism is about hurt, it's about shamefulness, about being denied access, it's about being denied housing, it's about being denied job opportunities, it's about, we had an opportunity in this county to hire a Black woman as the CEO of Heart, and that was denied. A person that may not have the transportation experience, but brought us through a pandemic in Heart and did not lay off a person, kept the system going, negotiated union contracts, and still was not able to get the job. And I must say, I have some serious feelings about why? Because of the color of her skin. So the bitter peel of how this came to this body, still is bitter in my mouth because it appears it was a political move. I might as well say it. And that's not right. I will continue to fight in this county for equal opportunity and justice. I will continue to fight in this county for equal opportunity in housing, healthcare, education, everything I possibly can until the good Lord calls me home. Until the good Lord calls me home. It's just unfortunately that the bitter taste in my mouth is still there. And that's absolutely wrong. This should not be about politics. This is about sitting down, trying to communicate with each other, and trying to make a difference in this city, county, state, and country. And I hope November 3rd, that a difference can be made, that we can start to heal this country on the divisiveness that it's had for the last four years. Motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith, please call the roll.
Millie?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Merman? Commissioner Merman?
I was on mute, sorry, yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will be moving on to the regular agenda. The first item is Item B1. Cheryl Howell is here to speak to the ship program.
Ms. Howell, you recognize? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I apologize for the delay. Cheryl Howell of Affordable Housing Services. And I am here this morning to present to you the FY1617 Ship Annual Report. But before I get into the actual request, it's a couple of things that I'd like to add, you know. First of all, I am just extremely proud of the body of work that the staff has done and the vendors that we partner with out in the community. We have done over $7.1 million in this particular report. We served over 118 down payment assistance clients. We provided rehab to over 58 families. We provided housing counseling to 230 households, and we helped to support 193 units of multifamily housing for a total of 369 households that were supported through this grant, the 1617 Grant Year. And so this morning, I'm here to ask that you accept the 2019 Ship Annual Report, which certifies that the county expended $7,113,519 in ship funds for the period covering the state fiscal 1617, and authorized the chairman to execute the certification associated with the annual report. The annual report is transmitted to the Florida Housing and Finance Corporation and reports on activities funded with the state fiscal year 1617. From July 1st, 2016, until the closeout of the grant, a total of $7,113,519.43 in ship funds was expended on eligible activities for this fiscal year.
Second motion by Commissioner Overman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Cheryl, I just want to thank you for the incredible, incredible work you do and your staff. And I can't say enough, every time somebody in the, I mean, we're starting to attract, because of our commitment to affordable housing, we're starting to attract new ideas and new partners. And I think that just shows your leadership and being able to vet out all these people out there and selecting the best ones that are going to help Hillsborough County rise to the top. But also, I think, I want to recognize Felicia Crosby Rucker especially because I know the recent death of her mother. And I think on behalf of most all of us on the commission, we'd like to extend our sympathies to her going forward. I know that's just a real tough time for her. And so with that, I know Cheryl, you're picking up the slack for her while she has been, or has been gone, not sure if she's back yet, but just thank you again for everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Merman, you're right, and Ms. Howell, thank you very much. Yeah, Ms. Crosby Rucker lost her mother, but we also had another death in our family, Dex DeBarge, mother passed. And I don't know if you all knew that, it passed, she passed, I think, last week, and he has been in the Panhandle, I hope, I don't know if he's back yet, and the Panhandle got beat up this morning from a storm. But yes, his mother passed, so thank you. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Merman, for your words. Hillsborough County is truly blessed with a rock star team in affordable housing. As the chair, I work with the department quite closely. The amount of work that is currently being done, if we weren't at a time of COVID, is stellar. The innovation and ideas that are coming forward to best deploy the ship funds is impressive, but then add COVID on top of it, and I would tell you that the leadership we have with Ms. Howell has been exemplary. Thank you very much for bringing this forward, and I'm very, very much in favor of actually approving this, so. Thank you for all your hard work.
Ms. Howell, what else can we say? You walk on water. Thank you very much. We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, the second by Commissioner Merman to approve Item B1. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Millie?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is also an affordable housing matter, Item B2. I believe Mary Helen Ferris will be here to present that item.
Yes, yes, Commissioners, Mary Helen Ferris. I think I have something wrong with my video, but I'll proceed. This item is to adopt a resolution approving the issuance by the Housing Finance Authority of Hillsborough County of its multifamily housing revenue bonds in an aggregate face amount not to exceed $36,500,000 for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of 134-unit multifamily rental housing development located in Hillsborough County. The multifamily rental units are for persons or families of moderate, middle, or lesser income. Approval of this item will have no financial impact on the FY20 adopted budget.
Ms. Perval?
Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll on Item B2.
Millie?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item B3. This is an agreement with Tampa Bay, and Ron Barton is here to.
Ms. DeBarge, you recognize?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Item B3. It's an agreement between Hillsborough County and Visit Tampa Bay, and it's related to a COVID-based tourism recovery plan. The Chairman Miller also chairs our Tourist Development Council, and in the last TDC meeting, Visit Tampa Bay made a presentation to deploy some additional TDT reserve dollars for COVID mitigation and recovery for our tourism community. Almost simultaneous to that TDC meeting, we got guidance from the Treasury Department that CARES funds could actually be used to help communities remarket themselves and recover from the tourism-based impacts of COVID. So we were already well on path related to a scope of work for marketing, but we're pleased to be able to tell you in this agenda item that we can use $1 million of CARES funds to actually fund this marketing initiative by Visit Tampa Bay. And it has no other effects to our budget. The dollars are available in our CARES budget, and we're pleased to bring this item for your approval.
Ms. Perval?
There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by.
Smith.
Second by Commissioner Smith to approve Item B3, and this is going to go a long way to try to build our system back. It's going to go a long way, so I hope that you all please vote in the positive for this. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Millie?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item B3. This is an agreement with Tampa Bay, and Ron Barton is here to.
Ms. DeBarge, you recognize?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Item B3. It's an agreement between Hillsborough County and Visit Tampa Bay, and it's related to a COVID-based tourism recovery plan. The Chairman Miller also chairs our Tourist Development Council, and in the last TDC meeting, Visit Tampa Bay made a presentation to deploy some additional TDT reserve dollars for COVID mitigation and recovery for our tourism community. Almost simultaneous to that TDC meeting, we got guidance from the Treasury Department that CARES funds could actually be used to help communities remarket themselves and recover from the tourism-based impacts of COVID. So we were already well on path related to a scope of work for marketing, but we're pleased to be able to tell you in this agenda item that we can use $1 million of CARES funds to actually fund this marketing initiative by Visit Tampa Bay. And it has no other effects to our budget. The dollars are available in our CARES budget, and we're pleased to bring this item for your approval.
Ms. Perval?
There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by.
Smith.
Second by Commissioner Smith to approve Item B3, and this is going to go a long way to try to build our system back. It's going to go a long way, so I hope that you all please vote in the positive for this. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Millie?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item B3. This is an agreement with Tampa Bay, and Ron Barton is here to.
Ms. DeBarge, you recognize?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Item B3. It's an agreement between Hillsborough County and Visit Tampa Bay, and it's related to a COVID-based tourism recovery plan. The Chairman Miller also chairs our Tourist Development Council, and in the last TDC meeting, Visit Tampa Bay made a presentation to deploy some additional TDT reserve dollars for COVID mitigation and recovery for our tourism community. Almost simultaneous to that TDC meeting, we got guidance from the Treasury Department that CARES funds could actually be used to help communities remarket themselves and recover from the tourism-based impacts of COVID. So we were already well on path related to a scope of work for marketing, but we're pleased to be able to tell you in this agenda item that we can use $1 million of CARES funds to actually fund this marketing initiative by Visit Tampa Bay. And it has no other effects to our budget. The dollars are available in our CARES budget, and we're pleased to bring this item for your approval.
Ms. Perval?
There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by.
Smith.
Second by Commissioner Smith to approve Item B3, and this is going to go a long way to try to build our system back. It's going to go a long way, so I hope that you all please vote in the positive for this. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Millie?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Commissioner Overman?
I think we lost Commissioner Overman.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero.
I'm here. Yes, 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 sorry, sorry.
Ms. Wise?
All righty, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is Item B4. This is a, this is the proposed project plan for 2021 for the transportation sales tax that gets delivered to the Independent Oversight Committee. John Lyons will present this item to you.
Mr. Lyons, you recognize?
Good morning, Commissioners. John Lyons, Public Works Administration. Commissioners, we're asking you to approve the proposed Hillsborough County 2021 project plan for transportation sales tax, sales surtax to be delivered to the Independent Oversight Committee for certification in accordance with the Transportation Surtax Charter Amendment, consistent also with the inter-local agreement regarding the sales tax. The project plan has been reviewed and certified by the county's independent professional engineer in compliance with the Charter Amendment, including intended uses of the proceeds in the five categories, maintenance and vulnerability reduction, congestion reduction, transportation safety improvements, transportation network improvements, and remaining funds. Collectively, these categories contribute to improving safety, preserving infrastructure, reducing congestion for our residents and employers. The 2021 plan was developed as a continuation of the adopted 2020 plan and provides additional funding for projects that were not fully funded by the 2020 plan. This project planned is grounded in MPO's Vision Zero Action Plan, the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan, the Planning Commission's Health and All Policies Resolution, parts, transit development plan, and the school district's safe routes to schools. As such, the project plan reflects the community's goals and provides input, paying through these and other initiatives. We just have a short presentation on, it's going to be some, next slide, please, Mr. Merman. Sliding over to- Back one slide, please, there you go. Thank you. Just a quick recap of the 20 transportation plan that was approved September of last year. The projects that are listed in the project plan are not in the approved six-year CIPs, they're all above that, they're all conformed to the four specific and one unrestricted categories. They include projects to reduce deferred maintenance, improve safety congestion, and provide alternatives to mobility options, implement resurfacing, bridge, and sidewalk repairs, safety street lighting, and other devices. The plan was to begin project development, studies, and design. The budget summary, the original plan for calendar year nineteen, calendar year twenty, which is the first-year plan, was on based on the projected revenues of about two hundred and fifteen million dollars. The revision to that county share of the revenues for this same period of time is about a hundred and sixty-one million dollars, or about fifty-three million dollars less than what was projected a year ago. Next slide, please. The proposed 21 transportation surtax plan is a continued focus on deferred maintenance, continuation of the project development and design phases of the 20 projects, and the projected budget summary for the county share of revenues for calendar year twenty-one are about eighty-eight point four million dollars. Next slide, please. The challenges to the transportation surtax program implementation is that the funding is still not available due to the litigation, therefore, no work has started on any of the projects, and the category restrictions do create some challenges in cases. That's the end of the presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I see no questions. It's a pleasure.
Move, Purvo.
Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you. Item B6, this is to approve agreements with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, better known as ACHA, and Mr. Early is here to present that item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm General Director, Healthcare Services Department. Agenda B6 requests to approve agreements with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, ACHA, for participation in low-income pool disproportionate share in related intergovernmental transfer programs, referred collectively as LIP programs. This requires an intergovernmental transfer to ACHA in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight million one hundred and one eight hundred and seventy-two point three five dollars, and is expected to draw down in excess of ninety-one million in additional funding for the Hillsborough County hospitals, federally qualified health centers, and behavioral health providers. Recognize that LIP programs are innovative and cost-effective programs under Florida statute, section 212.055, parentheses, four. It also requests delegated authority to the county administrator to review, complete, and execute a form substantially similar to the intergovernmental transfers questionnaire for each participating entity requested by ACHA. This form is required by ACHA, and the county is waiting for the final version to be provided by ACHA. Upon receipt of the final version, the county will complete the questionnaire and return it to ACHA before the October first, 2020 submission. There's no refunding requirement associated with the questionnaire, and since LIP programs began in 2009, Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan contract providers have provided in-kind services for the indigenous population. The county is able to send payment to ACHA to leverage millions in federal match dollars. The LIP dollars that come back to the providers can only be used to increase the provision of healthcare services and the charity care of Hillsborough County. I'll stop there.
Move, Purvo.
Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B6, seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item B4, this is a, the proposed project plan for 2021 for the transportation sales tax that gets delivered to the independent oversight committee. John Lyons will present this item to you.
Mr. Lyons, you recognize?
Good morning, Commissioners, John Lyons, Public Works Administration. Commissioners, we're asking you to approve the proposed Hillsborough County 2021 project plan for transportation sales tax, sales surtax to be delivered to the independent oversight committee for certification in accordance with the transportation surtax charter amendment, consistent also with the interlocal agreement regarding the sales, sales surtax. The project plan has been reviewed and certified by the county's independent professional engineer in compliance with the charter amendment, including intended uses of the proceeds in the five categories, maintenance and vulnerability reduction, congestion reduction, transportation safety improvements, transportation network improvements, and remaining funds. Collectively, these categories contribute to improving safety, preserving infrastructure, reducing congestion for our residents and employers. The 2021 plan was developed as a continuation of the adopted 2020 plan and provides additional funding for projects that were not fully funded by the 2020 plan. This project plan is grounded in MPO's Vision Zero Action Plan, the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan, the Planning Commission's Health and All Policies Resolution, Parks Transit Development Plan, and the School District Safe Routes to Schools. As such, the project plan reflects the community's goals and provides input paying through these and other initiatives. We just have a short presentation on, it's going to be some, next slide, please, Mr. Merman. We go to the next slide, slide, please. Sliding over to- Back one slide, please, there you go. Thank you. Just a quick recap of the 20 transportation plan that was approved September of last year. The projects that are listed in the project plan are not in the approved six-year CIPs, they're all above that, they're all conformed to the four specific and one unrestricted categories. They include projects to reduce deferred maintenance, improve safety congestion, and provide alternatives to mobility options, implement resurfacing, bridge, and sidewalk repairs, safety street lighting, and other devices. The plan was to begin project development, studies, and design. The budget summary, the original plan for calendar year nineteen, calendar year twenty, which is the first-year plan, was on based on the projected revenues of about two hundred and fifteen million dollars. The revision to that county share of the revenues for this same period of time is about a hundred and sixty-one million dollars, or about fifty-three million dollars less than what was projected a year ago. Next slide, please. The proposed 21 transportation surtax plan is a continued focus on deferred maintenance, continuation of the project development and design phases of the 20 projects, and the projected budget summary for the county share of the revenues for calendar year twenty-one are about eighty-eight point four million dollars. Next slide, please. The challenges to the transportation surtax program implementation is that the funding is still not available due to the litigation, therefore, no work has started on any of the projects, and the category restrictions do create some challenges in cases. That's the end of the presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I see no questions. It's a pleasure.
Move, Purvo.
Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is item F1, which are your various appointments to boards and committees, and so I believe Luanne is going to handle that for us.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have several boards that we will be doing appointments for. Your first board is your Affordable Housing Board. Please choose one, Commissioner Miller.
Number one.
Commissioner Overman.
One.
Commissioner Merman.
Karen Jackson Sims.
One.
Commissioner Kemp?
One.
It will be Karen Jackson Sims. Your next board is your Arts Council. Please choose five, Commissioner Miller.
Number three, number five, number six, number seven, and number eight.
Commissioner Overman?
Three, four, five, seven, and eight.
Commissioner Merman?
Three, four, five, seven, eight.
Commissioner Kemp?
Three, four, five, seven, eight.
It'll be Sharon Butler, Justin Odell, Georgia Vehu, Dontavious Pittman, and Denise Hood. Commissioner Hagan, who is your vote on the Affordable Housing?
One.
One, okay, thank you. Your next board is Career Source. Choose five from the first category under business, Commissioner Miller.
Nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Commissioner Overman?
Nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, and sixteen.
Commissioner White, or Commissioner Merman?
Ten, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Commissioner Hagan?
Ten, eleven, thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Commissioner Smith?
We can't hear you, Commissioner Smith.
Sorry. Nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Commissioner Kemp?
Nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
It will be Felicia Bell, Nikita Patel, Robert Hyland, Vanity Bar Little, and Jason Woody. And then Osea Nguyen will be appointed as the City of Tampa representative, and Gil Schifler will be appointed as the City of Temple Terrace representative. Your next board is your Child Care Licensing Hearing Officer. Please choose one, Commissioner Miller.
Number twenty.
Commissioner Overman?
Twenty.
Commissioner White, or Commissioner Merman?
Twenty.
Commissioner Hagan?
Twenty.
Commissioner Smith?
Twenty.
Commissioner Kemp?
Twenty.
It will be Bryant Scriven. Your next board is your County Internal Audit Committee. Nikita Patel was appointed to Career Source, so his name will come off the ballot. So of the three, please choose one, Commissioner Miller.
Twenty-three.
Commissioner Overman?
I'm sorry, which, which one are we on?
County Internal Audit Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one, my apologies. Twenty-three.
Commissioner Merman?
I think it was twenty, was that the last one? I'm sorry, I'm twenty, twenty-three.
Commissioner Hagan?
Twenty-three.
Commissioner Smith?
Twenty-three.
Commissioner Kemp?
Twenty-three.
Patricia Simmons will be reappointed. Your next board is the Healthcare Advisory Board. Ms. Myers, number thirty-four, has withdrawn her application. Please, there's three openings. The first one is for the Health Insurance Industry Representative, so Angela Birdsong will be chosen for that one. Then, please choose one from the next category, which is the Non-Healthcare Business Community Rep, and then choose one from the At-Large Rep, which is on two pages. Commissioner Miller?
Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Commissioner Overman?
Twenty-six and twenty-seven as well.
Commissioner Merman?
Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Commissioner Hagan?
Twenty-six and thirty-two.
Commissioner Smith?
Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Commissioner Kemp?
Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
It will be Lori Winkles and Sandra Brookins. Your next board is your Public Arts Committee. James Stile will be the first position, an architect, planner, landscape architect, or developer. From the second category, please choose one, Commissioner Miller.
Forty.
Commissioner Overman?
Thirty-seven.
Commissioner Merman? Commissioner Hagan?
Forty.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Kemp?
Thirty-eight.
We have a three-way tie. We can bring this back at the next board meeting.
Who's the tie between thirty-seven?
Everybody down there.
Everybody, it's like a three, everybody's got two votes.
Everybody down there. Bring it back, objective, bring it back.
It's hard when you've got great people applying, all of us.
Is there any objection? Bring it back?
No.
Okay, bring it back, Ms. Pennley.
Okay. Your next board is your Public Library Board. Please choose one from each district, Commissioner Miller.
Forty-two, forty-three, and forty-five.
Commissioner Overman?
Forty-one, forty-three, and forty-six.
Commissioner Merman?
Forty-two, forty-three, and forty-five.
Commissioner Hagan?
Forty-two, forty-three, and forty-five.
Commissioner Smith?
Forty-one, forty-three, and forty-five.
Commissioner Kemp?
Forty-one, forty-three, and forty-five.
District two will be Carmen Alvarez. District four will be Candace Martin, and we have a tie for District two between Russell Kahn and Michael Newitz. I can bring that back unless someone wants to change their vote.
I'll adjust my vote to Michael Newitz, which is forty-two.
Okay, so it will be Michael Newitz for District two. Your last board is your Planning Commission Board. This is continued from the September second board meeting. We need to choose one, Commissioner Miller.
Forty-seven.
Commissioner Overman?
Forty-nine.
Commissioner Merman?
Forty-seven.
Commissioner Hagan?
Forty-seven. 47.
Commissioner Smith.
49.
Commissioner Kemp.
49.
Readvertise.
Commissioner Smith, um, readvertise.
Readvertise. Is it, is it an objection to readvertising this?
Not at all.
No objection. Readvertising, Ms. Penley.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve appointments.
So.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, second, motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Obermann to approve the appointments. To the further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Obermann?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
That's wise.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your last item is the staff report. Receive the verbal report from management. My judge is an update of the COVID-19 programs and activities. And Tom Fessler and Tracy G. will be here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, or good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to go over with you the staff report for today regarding COVID-19. I'm sharing my screen, um, sharing my screen. Can I, can everybody see that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just wanted to up, quickly give an update on the R3 program, the Economic Recovery Program. Some, some highlights on, on this slide would be that the, the program, after we've made some administrative adjustments and we relaunched the program, and we've, have learned, kind of learned from our mistakes, we're now seeing some pretty, pretty significant increase in activity here. So some things that I wanted to kind of point out would be that, um, you can see that we have applications received of 4372 as of 9/8. As of yesterday, we had applications received of 4771. So that's an increase of 399 applications within the last week. You can also see that the total requested funding is $50.7 million. That's up from $33.1 million on your report from 8/24. And as of yesterday, we actually had, um, total requested of $59 million. So you can see just within the last week, we've gone up almost $10 million in the total amount requested. Also, we have about $15 million of, of payments that are associated with approved applications that are in the payment process at this point. Um, and then, again, you can see that we have, um, kind of an allocation there of the applicant, applicants by district. The average payments are now up, uh, from where, where they were in that, when we first launched the program. We're up to about, uh, an average of about $14.5 million, or $14,500. That's after we've adjusted the initial program where we were, uh, the awards were more down in the $10,000 range. As far as the, um, workforce training program, uh, again, this is another program that just was, since the last report, has seen some very significant increases, um, in activity. As far as the job seeker, seeker training applications, that's gone up from 1349 on the last report to 1751. Job seekers taking or cued for training has gone up from 115 on the last report up to 231, so that's almost doubled, or more than doubled. As far as employer applications, that's gone from last report of 118 to 781. So we're seeing some, a, a very significant increase in activity in this area. We're also considering, um, some potential enhancements that we might be discussing with you, um, when we bring back our next staff report. And this is just our project plan. And this is, um, a, a project plan for our nonprofit programs, which I, on my last report, it indicated to you that we were getting ready to kick these programs off. Um, you can see the dates there. We have, now have our childcare program has, we have kicked that one off. We have our safety net program, uh, which is also, just within the last day or so, um, is, is, is kicked in. We've kicked that program off, and then also our nonprofit venue program. So all of our nonprofit programs are now active, and we are, uh, doing, uh, we've identified ways to do outreach to the nonprofit community to make sure that we're successful in these areas. As far as our housing and utility assistance program, um, just some things to point out here, uh, we've got, uh, total paid, or in the process of being paid, we're up to $8 million, $8.7 million in Phase 2. That combined with Phase 1 puts us in the neighborhood of about $12 million, uh, in, in payments that have either been made or, or will be made shortly. Average payment is up to $4,500. Um, and you can see that the number of residents are paid, and in the process of being paid is approaching 2,000 at this point. As far as our food programs go, you can see that we have, um, almost 4 million meals that have been served. That's an increase since our last report of, uh, over 2 million meals. Residents served 388,000, and that's an increase of 125,000 since, um, August, or August 5th. As far as our, uh, facilities that we have, uh, that we're, that we've leased, you've got the Step Down Facility at the University Village. We've had 18 seniors in there, that's a decrease. This is good news, a decrease of 10 since the last report. We've got our housing program for the homeless. We do have a slight increase there to 57. And then finally, with our quarantine and isolation site, uh, we have no change since the last time, but we only have six, uh, six units occupied. As far as testing goes, uh, we're up to 104,500 individuals being tested. That's up from our last report of about 98,000 being tested. When we get back to some of the financial information, we were going to, we're going to be starting to see some, uh, fairly significant increases in disbursements over the next few weeks in this area. Our last report, uh, we had about $10.6 million in funds expended. This report, we've got almost $17 million in, dollars in funds that have been expended. Uh, we're going to be making some significant disbursements to the, each of the cities, uh, very shortly. I, in fact, approved a $4 million payment to Plant City this morning. Uh, the City of Tampa and Temple Terrace, uh, will be shortly taking their agreements to their boards for approval, and then we'll be, we'll be making disbursements to them, um, at that point in time. As far as, um, FEMA reimbursements go, or FEMA expenditures go, we're up to about 19, or almost close to $20 million. That's up from $16.7 million on the last report. Again, we believe that any of the, all of the expenditures that you're seeing here, um, that are considered to be, um, approved, approved as, as, uh, approvable expenditures by FEMA will be reimbursed, because we are going to be able to use the, um, CARES Act dollars to meet the matching requirements that are required from the county for the local match. And then again, this is, this slide is, uh, the same as you saw in your last report with about $29 million in other awards that we've received related to COVID. Um, and we'll continue to update this as we go forward. And with that, um, I will turn it over to Tracy G. Um, again, with, with these staff reports, we want to make sure that we kind of bring back some of the good news stories to you and tell you what we're doing as we go along, choose a different topic at each meeting. Like the last meeting, we talked about Head Start. Uh, today, we're talking about Aging Services, and I believe in the next report, maybe about Homeless Services. But with that, I'll turn it over to Tracy, and, um, Tracy, I'll go ahead and, and drive, uh, for your presentation. You can just need to let me know when to flip slides.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Tom.
Yes, Lord, we didn't know about Aging Services. I know I do.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tracy Gogicashvili, the Department Director for Aging Services. And I, I want to say thank you for this opportunity to share with you how we have adjusted our service delivery model for each of our programs to really mitigate the exposure risks for our seniors during this pandemic. I'll go through this by-service area and then wrap up with a news story that I feel really captures the heart of what we are doing. So, starting off with this first slide, Case Management and In-Home Care Services. This is a service that is traditionally conducted face-to-face in the homes of our seniors with telephone calls between visits. So instead, now we are conducting our assessments over the phone and actually working towards securing a telehealth-type of video conferencing platform to enhance this approach. And this will enable us to, you know, rather than just have the telephone contact with the seniors, the eyes on them, and make it more of a personal experience for them as well. We're continuing to enroll clients for in-home care services, but allowing them to place services on hold if the service is not conducive to a level of social distancing that the senior is comfortable with. And so an example of that would be personal care assistance, where they're getting assistance with bathing, dressing, grooming. Many of our seniors, and really the majority of them, have continued to receive this service. But we do have some that have opted to put that service on hold while they continue to receive some of the other care that we provide. Service providers, our, our in-home care services are contracted out to vendors, and then service providers are utilizing the appropriate PPE and complying with the guidelines established by CDC and the Agency for Healthcare Administration, um, through which they're licensed. Next slide, Tom. This slide depicts the continued increase in in-home care clients that we have served, going from about 800 in February to nearly 950 in July. So this is really just to show you that we haven't backed away from addressing our waiting list or serving our homebound seniors who continue to need our help. We're just serving them a little differently and with additional precautions in place. Next slide. Our adult daycare centers remain closed. However, we have offered in-home care respite as an, as an alternative, as well as home-delivered meals. Um, we've seen where approximately 30% of the seniors and their caregivers have accepted this, um, respite care, and the majority of them have also accepted the home-delivered meals. Caregivers have the opportunity to participate in caregiver support groups, which is particularly important as they navigate the additional challenges surrounding social distancing and perhaps feeling more isolated and at risk for exhaustion and depression. We are conducting telephone reassurance calls, and our RNs and LPNs are assisting with health-related questions, and we are conducting remote interactive workshops. Excuse me. We're also providing engagement activity bags to our adult daycare clients, as well as our active seniors. These are being prepared with the senior's functional level in mind, and may include items such as bingo cards, adult coloring books, puzzles, crafts, and even pedometer, so they can still monitor their steps. The intent is really to encourage participation in wellness activities and reduce feelings of loneliness. Next slide. Our senior centers also remain closed, but again, with the opportunity for our seniors to participate in remote programming. We're offering over 50 virtual wellness classes weekly, with many of them being offered in both English and Spanish. As with adult daycare, we are providing the activity bags to encourage continued engagement. We're also looking to pilot a virtual comprehensive social engagement platform that will enable our seniors to participate in live, interactive health and wellness activities through their television. Um, the, the thing I love about this opportunity is that if the senior doesn't necessarily have a computer or, um, or an iPad or some other device, it's really easy for them to participate through the use of their television. There'll be established contact built into the program, as well as the ability for us to offer our own classes through this program. And we really see here an opportunity to engage a lot of the other departments in Hillsborough County to offer some of this programming, you know, looking at something like consumer protection, where they can provide some information regarding, you know, you hear about, unfortunately, the senior scams, and, you know, many other opportunities. Seniors who, I'm sorry, Tom, next slide. Seniors who traditionally were intending our congregate dining centers are now receiving home-delivered meals and weekly wellness calls. Those residing in senior living facilities are either collecting their meal in a grab-and-go setup, or the meals are delivered door-to-door where those facilities, um, where it's more of a challenge for them to maintain social distancing in a grab-and-go setup. We've experienced an approximate 30% increase in seniors receiving our nutrition services since February, and we are making it a priority to enroll them within 24 hours of contacting us for nutrition assistance. Next slide. Our Silver Platter Initiative is born of a partnership between the Department of Elder Affairs, the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association, and the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. Through this Emergency Meal Initiative, we've been able to provide nutritious and delicious meals to our nutrition clients, while also supporting local restaurants and food trucks. Once or twice a week, the partner restaurants and food trucks are delivering a meal to some of our clients, and primarily those who live alone or in more remote areas of the county. We've had a great partnership with Sunshine Line, as they've been able to step in and assist with outgoing deliveries for one of our restaurant partners who was unable to coordinate meal deliveries on their own, and it's worked out incredibly well. Communications has done a tremendous job of getting the word out about Silver Platter, with media coverage taking place, uh, several times a month. And so I'd like to wrap up this presentation with one of those news stories that really does a good job of getting to the heart of what we are doing. And so, um, pull that up.
New at 11, local restaurants are teaming up with Hillsborough County Services to deliver meals to seniors who need some help. It's a brand-new partnership to help those struggling during this pandemic.
Is this?
Brianna Aradondo is live for us in Tampa tonight.
Is this a TV show? We're not seeing it.
They've been struggling too, so it sounds like this may be a beneficial partnership.
And Cynthia, Hillsborough County got funding from the state through the CARES Act to help fund this pilot program, so they're teaming up with places like Mission Barbecue to make meals. And it's a boost for restaurants and for those struggling to put food on the table. Beef brisket.
Slow-cooked.
Mac and cheese.
Nice piled high.
This is not your typical to-go order.
Should we take time and temperature with these?
Workers at Mission Barbecue are packing meals for Hillsborough County seniors in need.
One more?
Like Regina Walsh.
Those two meals I receive every week are very important for me. It, it makes a difference that I eat that day.
It's part of Hillsborough County's Silver Platter Program. Money from the CARES Act now allows local restaurants and food trucks to serve residents who are the most vulnerable during the pandemic.
Those who are low-income and, I'd say, living in, uh, areas that are sometimes considered as food desert.
Once the meals are ready to go, drivers come and pick them up, then travel on their route.
Today, I'm going to be delivering in Tampa and, um, and also in Loops.
Once they arrive, the knocks on the door are not just about receiving a meal, it's also about seeing a friendly face.
30-second conversation, just how you're doing. She checks on me to make sure I'm okay.
And that time can sometimes become a lifeline.
We even had, um, one driver to, uh, find a, one of our seniors in an emergency situation, called 911, and that individual was hospitalized and released, and is now doing well.
With the pilot program underway for the last three months, seniors tell us they hope it keeps on going.
It's vital to everybody that's in my position.
And Hillsborough County tells us that the Silver Platter Program serves about 1,000 seniors right now, and they plan to expand. After receiving even more funding through the CARES Act, they say that they plan to expect the, the, expect the program to run through December. Cynthia?
Thank goodness for programs like that one, that's for sure. Thank you, Brianna.
Developing tonight.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Obermann, you're recognized.
Um, thank you, and thank you, Tracy, for a fabulous presentation, and help us understand how, how broad. Yep, you can hear me, okay. How, how broadly we've looked at, at the circumstances and how, um, how innovative the department has been to reach out to our seniors, as well as the communications way to using this television versus internet. Because many of our, our seniors are not as familiar with how to utilize internet for classes like that. So I think that's, uh, really a great way of addressing the issue. Just as a point of order unrelated to aging services, but, um, I'd, I'd like to remind the public that the CARES program is doing a fabulous job in the area of the, of rental assistance and utilities. Uh, that program is county-wide. Um, I've had a lot of calls from citizens that have said, "Well, I live in the city, so I'm not eligible." That's not true. So, um, each, the city has its programs, we have our programs, but, but the best way to find out how to avoid on being in a situation where you feel as though you're at risk of losing your housing. your housing, is to inquire about the program and make sure that you apply. There have been, you know, the county's working very hard to utilize those funds to keep our communities stable and strong, and, you know, knowing that you have your rent paid can help avoid evictions down the road, which ultimately avoid homelessness, especially in those circumstances where it's very difficult to find affordable housing in our community. So please make sure that you call one-eight-six-six-five-three-eight-two-nine-two-six if you've got a challenge with your rent or utilities, that you'd like to get some questions answered, and then you can apply online and make sure that you get the resources that you need. And I'll stop there. Thank you so much for the entire staff that's working overtime.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you for the fabulous job that you all are doing, working so hard, and it's very, very impressive. And I was especially impressed when I saw that if a senior calls needing food assistance, and that's so important, the response is made within twenty-four hours, which I think is pretty amazing and very, very responsive, and I know it is meaningful both for food but for contacts. So I'm proud of the county and their work in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me thank you all, especially for working with the senior citizens and what you're doing for senior citizens in this county. You know, I care a lot about, you know, my age and getting old, but I've been blessed and continue to be blessed, my wife and I, to be able to do the things that we do, but there's a lot of senior citizens out there that need your help constantly, just like the news report said. One of the drivers went and found someone who was in a dire situation, and was able to pick up the phone and call nine-one-one and get somebody to the hospital. That's, 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 how can you say enough thank you, thank you, thank you for that? So all that you're doing and working in this county, we want to thank you for that. And I want to thank all of the county employees. I mean, I always say we've got the best county employees in the country. We do. I mean, I've seen, since this COVID-19, I've seen some programs, we talk about it at five o'clock at night, and eight o'clock tomorrow morning, the programs in place. I'm like, did you all sleep? That's the kind of employees that we have. So, Ms. Wise, you've inherited a great, great, great team, so thank you very much. Commissioner Kemp, your hand's still up?
Mine's up.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
I'm sorry. You made some great comments. Tracy, obviously, I'm a huge fan. I think, going back to the recession, when you really grabbed hold of the problem we have, getting meals out to our seniors, and you just have expanded that program even more over the years. And I want to thank you and your team, Mary Jo, what you do to engage our seniors, keep them healthy, keep them safe, is commendable, and just keep up the good work. And like I said, Bonnie, you, that's a great group we have there. They're taking care of our seniors, and after they deliver to Commissioner Miller, they can come to me.
Okay. Anything further, Ms. Tracy or Mr. Fessler? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Wise?
Yes, and thank you Commissioners for all your comments. You know, Tracy and her team, Sunshine Line, and all the departments are working so hard to protect our citizens. And Commissioner Overman, thank you for mentioning that our programs on the CARES dollars, whether it's on the business side or the individual side, are county-wide. And so they're still available, so businesses, please apply. Individuals, still please apply. Thank you so much. The next item is just future discussion items, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any future discussion items? Any future discussion items going once, any future discussion items going twice, any future discussion items going three times, see none. That concludes our agenda. Thank you all for being with us today. We appreciate it. And with that, seeing no further business, we adjourn.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good day, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good one.[1770.65]